All right, we will call the October Board of Education meeting to order. And we'll call it as fast.
Mr. Nickram?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Here.
Mrs. Sneeden?
Here.
Mr. Chaney?
Here. Thank you very much. We are all here. If you would all please join me for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each month or each meeting, we read the mission statement of the School District of Fort Atkinson, and that mission statement is, "The School District of Fort Atkinson is committed to delivering the quality opportunities and services each student needs to achieve his or her academic and personal potential." Next, we will move on to, Dr. Abbott will present us with item 8, recognition and highlights.
Well, again, good evening, board members. Wisconsin's 421 public school boards are the essence of representative government. Just as the citizens educated by our public schools form the backbone of our democracy, the boards that govern those schools live out democratic principles each and every day. Wisconsin's School Board Education Week was this year celebrated on October 4th through the 10th. This annual recognition provides us the chance to recognize those men and women who volunteer to serve their communities as well as their children. School Board members serve part-time, though they are accepting a very challenging role. They must be accountable to their taxpayers while setting long-term visions for their school districts. They advocate for children at all levels of government and oversee multimillion-dollar budgets. Boards set the course for their districts on hundreds of topics, from school safety to financial planning to academic standards. In addition to preparing for and attending board meetings, board members spend countless hours studying the issues and participating in professional development. As we are all keenly aware, we are living in unprecedented times, with unprecedented impacts on public education, with unprecedented discord throughout the educational landscape. We in Fort Atkinson are in the most unusual position to have five board members with us, all of them with school-aged children. They not only govern our district, but they also personally live with the decisions they make day in and day out. You are all indeed very committed. No one runs for a public service position such as a public school board member anticipating times like we find ourselves in today. While the decisions our board have made of late may not always be popular with all of our constituents, they have been well researched, they've been deliberate, forward-thinking, and in keeping with our vision and our mission. We all know too well the Wild West of social media of late, and here are just a few comments, though, that community members shared in response to our Facebook posts just a couple of weeks ago. "Thank you for all you do for our staff, students, and community. You make our schools great. Thank you for your continued effort and stand, thank you for your continued standard of excellence and always striving to see the bigger picture. Thank you, you're rocking it." I thought that was a good one, right? "Thank you for your time and attention to these very important matters. Thank you to all, I can't imagine what this year has been like for you as a board, so thank you for being people who offer their time and resources to our community, and thank you for the commitment to the children and families of the School District of Fort Atkinson. Your hard work has not gone unnoticed. Thank you for the countless and thankless hours you put in." And then my personal favorite, "Thank you and good luck with praying hands emojis." To celebrate your dedication, devotion, and best leadership efforts, we enlisted our art teachers this year from each of our school buildings to select a single piece of artwork from one of their students as a lasting depiction of what can be done when starting with a simple blank sheet of paper, just as your work has been over these past many months. So, Mr. Nickram, you have a piece by Mira Smith, a 5th grader at Rockwell. Mrs. Reynolds, yours is by Elodie Thies, a 3rd grader here at Luther. Mrs. Sneeden, yours comes from Alexandria Loopke, a 4th grader at Berry. Mr. Paul, yours is from Ashland Hampton, an 8th grader here at Fort Atkinson Middle School. Mr. Chaney, yours is from Charlie Dipbrenner, a Fort Atkinson High School student. And Mrs. Haas, yours is still in production, but when it's delivered later this week, Blake Sampson, a Purdy 4th, 3rd grader, rather, will have provided you an art for your own personal collection. So, again, board members, with a heartfelt thanks for all of your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott. Thank you, guys. We will now, we will now move to the portion of the agenda where we will entertain public comments. If anyone would like to make any public comments from the room, please approach the podium just to give us your first and last name and address. Seeing none of those, are there any to be read?
Yes, I do have one this evening from Nathan Hathaway at N875 Twin Knolls Drive here in Fort Atkinson. He writes, "I urge the Fort Atkinson School Board to reopen schools on November 2nd, 2020. As of writing this on October 23rd, throughout the entirety of the 2020, the total of roughly 2.4 of Jefferson County residents have at some point tested positive for COVID-19. Currently, only 65 hundredths of the population of Jefferson County is testing positive for the coronavirus. The COVID-19 mortality rate for Jefferson County is .012 percent, and the mortality rate of COVID-19 for those who have contracted it is .49 percent. Put another way, in Jefferson County, throughout all of 2020, 97.6 of Jefferson County residents have never tested positive for COVID-19. Right now, 99 in 35 hundredths of the population of Jefferson County is not testing positive for the coronavirus. The percent of Jefferson County residents who have not contracted and not died from COVID-19 is 99 in 51 hundredths. I and others are led, I and others were led to believe the Fort Atkinson School Board was going to be looking at every metric when making the decision whether or not to close schools or not. That unfortunately is not the case. Instead of looking at the percent of new daily court cases in Jefferson County, the percent of new daily cases in Fort Atkinson, the seven-day and 14-day averages of both, the percent of those currently infected versus recovered, the mortality rate in Jefferson County, the mortality rate in Fort Atkinson, the number of individuals with COVID-19 by school, age group, et cetera, in Fort Atkinson, the Fort Atkinson School Board has decided to look at one lone metric in one alone. That in and of itself is disappointing. It's also highly disappointing that the Fort Atkinson School Board refuses to look at other areas in which the schools are being closed are tremendously detrimental to children. Every day, there are reports from pediatricians, law enforcement, and social workers listing the negative impact of these schools' closures on children, from mental health problems, hunger, obesity due to inactivity, and risk of child abuse on top of the loss of an education. I stand with a large majority of parents and students of the School District of Fort Atkinson who want schools open for those who wish to attend in person." That is the only comment that we had submitted this evening, Mr. Chaney.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Abbott. Moving forward, we will now consider the consent agenda.
Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval by the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items have been provided to all board members in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. This evening's consent agenda include Item A, regular meeting minutes of the September 17th, 2020 meeting; Item B, early graduation requests; Item C, personnel requests; Item D, the 2021 academic and career plan; Item E, start college now and early college credit program requests; Item F, board policy 5200 attendance update; Item G, new policy 8450.01, personal protective equipment during a pandemic slash epidemic events; Item H, board policy 0167.1 voting update; Item I, board policy 0164.1 regular meetings update; Board policy 29.2 updates; Item K, gifts to the school district that include rectify collision restoration for snap-on wheel alignment system with a value of $2,000 to the Fort Atkinson High School Technical Education Department; Green Bay Packaging, Wisconsin Packaging Division for Red Pens; Diane Krause for a $50 donation toward the COVID mask projects; Employees of Ball Corporation for school supplies including items such as backpacks, notebooks, pencils, and crayons; Employees of NASCO for school supplies; Community members for contributing to the school supply drive at Patty Coffins; and the Fort Tax Service. Item L, personnel stipend for the board secretary; and finally, Item M, payment of district bills and the treasurer's report.
All right, did we have any discussion over the items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, go ahead and consider the motion to approve the consent agenda as written. And would the approved consent agenda have written?
I will second.
I have a first by Mr. Paul, a second by Mr. Nickram, all those, or is that a, that's a roll call, roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Hi.
Mrs. Sneeden?
Hi.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes.
And that passes. Moving on to the instruction portion of the evening, Mr. Halverson is going to have an ACT exam results and some, 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 good, we'll just let, we'll just let Mr. Halverson let's know.
It sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chaney. We do this every year, and we go through the ACT results, and we had the option this year of, of not talking about it, but I thought with these results, we really want to talk about it. Because with the results that we've got this year, the concerted effort, not just by our teaching staff, but by our students and the positivity that came out of it, it's noteworthy to go through the results. So, tonight's presentation is going to have a little different lean than what we've had previously over the past few years, and as we've talked about before, it does vary class to class, and that'll come up a little bit later in the presentation, too. But ultimately, this is the class of 2021, our senior class right now. So, we had a total of 207 test takers, and this was given during the spring of last year, just prior to when we closed down for the pandemic. Every year, the entire class takes it, and this all started back in the 2015 school year when it was mandated that all juniors, whether they're planning on attending a four-year college or not, were required to take the ACT exam as part of state mandated testing. Overall, in the state of Wisconsin, there's about 62,000 students that take the ACT, and of that, 49% of them are female and 51% of them are male. Just a little statistic, and I'll get there for you. Thanks, Deidre. Let's try that again. There we go. All right. One of the things that comes out of our ACT testing from the state is they give us a breakdown of what our students' plans are as they are juniors, and that can change by the time they graduate or by the time they go onwards after school. But as we broke the data down, some of the totals indicated that the students chose more than one category, and, for example, along with a professional-level degree, some students put down either a two-year or a bachelor's degree to attain that total. This has been pretty consistent of what our students are, what their aspirations look like year to year since 2015, it hasn't changed a whole lot. Most of our students are planning on moving to a two-year or a technical college, and some of our students are planning on going to a four-year college. So even though it says 27 point, is it 22.9, say, a bachelor's degree, those other totals get incorporated in there, too. And here's the good news. So, compared to the state and compared to the last few years, this is a marked improvement in our overall composite score for ACT. In this case here, and I do celebrate this with kind of a reserved hesitancy, because year to year, we do have predictors in place that allow us to kind of get an idea or a feel for what each class is going to look like when they take the ACT, and it does matter what they do ahead of time before they take this test and what they're going to do afterwards, also plays a role in that. So typically, when we have a class with higher percentages that are intending on attending, going to a university when they graduate from high school, we'll have higher test scores, and that's the case with this. Our population of students in this class has a higher percentage of students wanting to go to a four-year college or university. So we do get a pretty good idea of how the results are going to turn out based upon previous year's standardized test results, as well as some of the scores that is submitted by our students that have taken it previously, but we also get a good feel for it last year because we also had all of our students take the pre-ACT test to get an idea of areas that they need to work on to improve. As a mandated test, the students that can opt out of testing or those that aren't intending on using it for their academic career plan do have an impact on the overall composite score. So as you see this by our results from our students this year, our seniors this year, they all did very, very good and put a lot of effort into what they accomplished. And this also includes students that didn't take the test, scoring a total of zero. We had quite a few more 35s and 36s this year compared to previous classes as well. So the composite score is a breakdown of several different scores, and as you look at those same scores provided by ACT and the benchmarks by the state scores, this is how we turned out as a, as a class. Our English showed a big improvement compared to last year and also a big improvement over the state of Wisconsin. Math scores were still not quite to the level of the state of Wisconsin, but that was a very, very large increase compared to the math scores the year prior. As we compare ourselves to the rest of the state, especially in math, there are still needs and areas of improvement or adjustment in our curriculum and what's being taught to the students, and we're already in process of addressing those. With the implementation of our building goal directly on ACT composite scoring, we saw great dividends and gains across all subject areas, but just like you see on there compared to the state in reading and in science, we showed some very, very large gains compared to the state of Wisconsin overall, and science especially. So ACT establishes benchmarks. What a benchmark is, well, let's start, the 36 is the top score of any ACT test. So benchmark scores are set by ACT that suggest that students are sufficiently prepared for higher levels of success in college. So according to ACT's benchmark score, this is the minimum score needed on an ACT subject-area test to indicate a 50 percent, 50% chance of obtaining a B or higher, or about a 75% chance of obtaining a C or higher in a corresponding credit-bearing college course. So these are the benchmarks that ACT establishes to determine whether a freshman entering college is going to be successful or not in college. Comparing us with those benchmark scores of the rest of the state, you'll see that all of our students are higher in their preparation level for the rest, compared to the rest of the state. So all students that are, are prepared in all four areas is equivalent to what the state's preparation level is. The college biology one is a very big increase from last year's scores. In addition to the other subject areas, some colleges and universities do require that students seeking enrollment take the writing test. The, the subtest continues to be an area that we work with our students on improving as regardless of whether a student attends a four-year college or not, writing is a skill that any path after high school is critical to be successful in. So this is an area we continually work on. State average for that was 6.3 out of 12, and our average score for our students was 6.3 out of 12. On the writing subtest, students receive scores in each of the areas of English, essay, and English and writing combined. This is also a very large increase from the scores from the prior year, as well as in comparison to the state. When we looked at our comparables, and this was something that was kind of a sore spot for all of us at the high school last year, especially from a staff standpoint, because all of us are confident in the fact that we prepare our college, or prepare our students for whatever it is they choose to do next, whether it's college, whether it's military, whether it's tech school, whether it's going right into the workforce, we were very, very confident that what we do and how we do it is preparing our students for what's next. But in comparing us and ourselves to the rest of our conference, that did not really give us a whole lot of assurance that we were doing what we needed to do. This year, we are in ninth compared to all the rest of the schools in our major conference, and you may recall from last year, we were in 14th out of 15 schools. A closer representation of our students in our population, though, falls into what we call the Highway 26 corridor schools. So overall, this is a more similar reflection of our student body, as well as our demographics in comparison to other schools. When looking at our more demographically similar students, you see we are at the top of the schools that were able to provide their scores to us. Last year's scores, however, are not published and weren't available publicly, as they have been in the past by the state, so we personally sent requests to the schools that were willing to provide us the scores that they did. And with those results there, typically, we've been in third or fourth place, and in this case here, based upon what we've received, we're in second place out of the Highway 26 corridor schools. That also is a very, very marked improvement compared to last year. So we get these ACT scores from the state. It's always been a thing I communicate to the students that this is a free test that the state is giving us, that saves you $80 if you decide you want to use it some point in time in the future to go to school, or whatever that you're going to do once you leave high school. And one of the things the ACT is kind enough to do with those results is send them to colleges and universities free of charge so that they can have the results for the students that might be interested in continuing after high school. A very large increase over the past three or four years has all gone to Madison College, and this year isn't any different. There was a very big jump between the students that sent them to four-year colleges as well as Madison College, but as you can tell with our locale, the ones going to Whitewater and Madison are still higher compared to the rest of the schools that received these results, and again, higher submissions at tech schools over the past previous years. When the state mandates things in general, we always come from the standpoint of, if this is something that they need, what are the things that we can get out of it to benefit our students and our school? So this data does provide us more information than just something that goes on a school report card. It gives us individual data points that we can research and find ways to improve not only what we do for our entire school, but for individual students as well. So data points that we look through as we're going through the results we receive from ACT, and we dive deeper into specific data points include special education, our Hispanic population, economically disadvantaged students, as well as a common course pattern and how that has an impact on college readiness benchmarks for kids that do want to go to four-year school. It also gives us results on a breakdown for male performance in standardized tests versus female performance in standardized tests. So we saw, again, improvement this year compared to last, pretty much across the board in special education, economically disadvantaged, but our largest increase over all of it was our Hispanic test takers. And the results for Hispanic test takers are actually some of the highest in the state of Wisconsin, which is very big accolades to our ELL teachers and also the programming that they receive to get the help that they need to be successful as they get done with high school. Lastly, the, also important to consider, this is only the results for the state mandated testing that we do in the spring. The accountability portion of the ACT testing that's utilized for school report card calculation only is a total of all of the students regardless of their post-high school plans. Students who have plans of attending four-year universities often view this testing very differently than, say, a student that's going to be joining the workforce directly after school, where ACT may not be considered as directly important to a student's career path as college. The overall class totaling of the ACT, on the other hand, is a combination of all of the times our students take the test combined with this accountability or state-required testing. For example, students that attend a four-year university or are applying for scholarship where the ACT score is considered oftentimes take the ACT multiple times, and the best score is a reportable score, and this happens after the state mandated testing. That's the good news. The bad news is ACT doesn't provide that to us anymore. But we were able to compile what we had, and what we saw was, not only were our results better this portion, but comparatively to other years, we're anticipating they're going to be higher, much higher than what they were with the students that take the test multiple times after state mandated testing. So that increase is actually going to go up even higher, which is what we've seen in the past as well. Historically, as this combines all of the chances students have to take the ACT in addition to state-required testing, we always show an improvement over the past five years. And that concludes the presentation on our senior classes' ACT results.
Well, I'm glad we got the presentation. It's good to, good to see our name move up on that, on all of the lists.
You know, I joked with Ms. Oakley about this last, towards the end of last year is, wouldn't it be something, is if we blow the scores for ACT out of the water and then we don't get to report it on a report card? And sure enough, my psychic ability comes through. After all the years of the report card with the errors and the scores and the impact that it had on it, this would have been one that put us pretty high over the top, including the Hispanic test result takers, so. It was nice to be able to talk about it, and like I said, more than anything, spotlighted our staff and the hard work they did, you know, coming together on how can we improve our student results, but more than anything, our seniors and how good they really, really prepared for it and did on this test in light of everything else that they had in their lives going on. That's it.
Now, that's, that's great. What we're looking for, I mean, that's why we're doing this, is to have those improvements. So I'm sure you feel, you know, proud, and I'm sure your staff feels proud, and they should, so should those students. I don't have any, any direct questions, but does anybody have any for Mr. Halverson?
Yeah, so you mentioned earlier that there are students that don't take the test, they ultimately just give a zero on that, and that's been reflected in, in those scores. There was, was this year's number higher or about normal than what we're seeing in the past?
We had a couple less compared to over previous years, but we did have some students that also scored very low, and we're, and like I said, when we roll into these tests and right before the test, we're pretty conscientious about who's going to put maximum effort into them. And those that are going to basically just blow it off. We work hard to try to encourage them not to, because whether they just know what they're doing immediately after high school, or they think they know what they're going to do right after high school, those things can change. So we really encourage them to take it seriously and work hard at it, and 99% of our students do, and they work hard at it, but there's a few in there that just, I don't want to take this test, and then we end up by getting a zero score to our overall total.
Fair, thank you.
You bet.
It really is a whole-school effort, though. I mean, obviously, in the preparation, and I think that definitely showed through as we made some, some nice gains last year, but also in the administration. I mean, they're actually driving around and picking up kids and bringing them in, and the way the test is administered in groups and they're fed, and it definitely has become an event as opposed to something that we hope kids do well on. It's totally, or it's fully a total school setup as well as execution, and I think that was very impressive last year.
Yeah. Thanks, Rob.
Good.
Anybody else? Any thoughts, questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Harper.
Thank you.
Glad we were able to do that. It's great. Moving forward, we will now move to the non-instruction portion of the evening, and we will have Mrs. Harper. Are you going to do the addendum to the employee handbook? Is that correct?
Yeah, Mrs. Harper, Director of Human Resources, is going to provide the board a bit of an introduction.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm excited to share this update because the most recent Personnel Committee meeting held on October 15th was the launch of our new process related to these meetings. Based upon utilization of the prior format related to Personnel Committee meetings, it became clear that staff and committee members alike would benefit from some adjustments to the process. In order to best serve the employees of the School District of Fort Atkinson, the following modifications were made to this process. First, materials are sent out to all staff and committee members via email three to five days in advance of the meeting date to give employees ample time to review documents that will be discussed at the scheduled meeting. Second, explanations of the items to be discussed, such as reasoning, background, et cetera, will be provided along with the materials. And finally, staff will have the opportunity to pose questions and provide feedback on the materials and items via a Google form so that the committee and human resources or other representatives can be prepared to discuss and address the feedback at the scheduled meeting. This new and improved process ensures that all staff have a voice at the table as it relates to proposed changes and also gives time to collect and prepare answers or adjustments based on such feedback. The purpose of the meeting that was held on October 15th was to discuss a proposed COVID-19 addendum to the employee handbooks that are currently in place. As we've seen firsthand in recent months, there's a litany of complicated rules and regulations related to the COVID-19 pandemic that has created a unique challenge for the district as an employer as well as for our employees. We've done an excellent job of adapting by adopting, enforcing, and then revising policies through this time of constant change. As we continue to focus on reviewing and updating policies that respond to the challenges presented by the pandemic, the time has come to implement a COVID-19 employee handbook addendum which serves to house these new policies. Employee handbooks are essential, both as resources for employers and employees alike. The importance of a COVID-19 handbook addendum lies in the fact that our normal policies and procedures are just that, normal. They're great when we're functioning in a They're great when we're functioning in a pre-COVID world, but they don't address some of the new needs, flexibilities, laws, and regulations that we've been seeing for the past six to seven months and would expect to see for the foreseeable future. The purpose of the Handbook addendum is to provide a central resource related to district initiatives, practices, processes, and protocols, while also ensuring compliance with federal, state, and local laws, regulations, and guidance. I feel the timing of the adoption of this Handbook addendum is ideal. We've been living for this now for enough time to have the ability to react to and develop plans for some of the items that we've been faced with. We've been able to see what has worked and what can, and what could use some adjusting, and we've been able to be somewhat proactive in planning for what yet may be to come. This Handbook addendum, as I said, will be a supplement to the existing employee handbooks from the time it is adopted by the board, following the typical process of two board readings, which this is to be the first of, until pandemic protocols are no longer necessary in the district's operations. The content in this Handbook addendum was created using a variety of different resources, including guidance from WASPA, which is the Wisconsin Association of School Personnel Administrators, SHRM, which is the Society for Human Resource Management, legal guidance from local law firms, which specialize in both school and employment law, and information from the Department of Labor, CDC, and the Jefferson County Health Department. The Handbook content was created with three specific purposes in mind. First, providing alignment with the board-adopted School District of Fort Atkinson reopening handbook, which you all approved at the August 3, 2020 board meeting. Second, providing federal, state, and local compliance with laws, rules, and regulations related to COVID-19 and employee health. And third, providing SDFA employees' flexibility and grace during a completely unprecedented time. At the October fifteenth Personnel Committee meeting, specific sections of the Handbook addendum as related to each purpose were explained in more detail. Thanks to the new process in place, committee members and human resources staff were able to respond and clarify based upon questions and feedback from staff. Following the meeting, an additional copy of the Handbook addendum, the questions addressed, and meeting minutes were emailed to all staff. At this time, it is my understanding that all board members have received those same materials for review. So unless you have specific questions for me related to the Handbook addendum at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cheney and Mrs. Reynolds to lead any further discussion.
So, Mrs. Reynolds, saw you. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. So, I don't have any questions. You did a great job clarifying everything in the initial meeting, and then again tonight, and this is just a first reading, correct?
Correct.
So we have all the time in the world, or well, not all the time, but we have plenty of time to scrutinize more should we feel the need to, and we can always reach out to you with more questions.
Absolutely.
Given that, does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Harper?
No, thank you for putting the new procedure in place. I know that's a really big deal for our staff to have this open communication line.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, we will now have our 2021, 2021 budget adjustments. And that would be Mr. Demrath.
Thank you.
I have that right in front of me. So, with the, we're, sorry, Mr. Demrath, this is totally my fault. We need to back up and approve the addendum to the employee handbook. Thank you, Mrs. Haas. So I will, we will now entertain the motion to approve the addendum to the employee handbook.
The result of the COVID-19 addendum to the employee handbook has noted in the board materials be placed on the table and considered at the November board meeting.
I will second. Motion by Mr. Paul, second by Mr. Nicrom. All those in favor say aye. And those opposed? And that passes. Thank you very much for the clarification, Ms. Haas.
If I might, just before, just for the public's knowledge, two board committee meetings did occur in the last couple of weeks. One was a policy committee meeting, of which Mr. Cheney and Mr. Nicrom were a part of a couple of weeks ago. As you notice in the consent agenda, there was quite a litany of policy updates and some new policies regarding some operational shifts that we need to make given the current time. So that was a committee meeting that was thick with content as well, and then obviously the Personnel Committee meeting that Ms. Harper was just speaking of as well.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott, for the clarification. Now, we will move forward to the grand budget, proposed final budget, and Mr. Demrath, please.
All right, thank you. This evening, I will outline the proposed 2020-21 final budget for the School District of Fort Atkinson. More information, including a video of this presentation, can be found on our website at fortschools.org under the Business Services Department. I'm going to start with a summary of where we were projecting finances over the next three years prior to COVID. What you see here is a summary of the financial projection that was used during referendum planning this past winter. As you can see, over the course of the three years of the newly-approved referendum, we end that time essentially breaking even. However, as we all know, things have now changed, and the financial future of the district is in the longer term at best uncertain. In the short term, let's look at how we were projected to end last year and what the 2021 planned budget was at that time. As you can see, in the last year of the 2016 referendum, we were planning a deficit of just under 1.3 million. We'll see how we actually ended the year shortly. As for 2021, we were planning a $1.3 million surplus with the successful April referendum. Again, we'll see how that compares to the proposed budget in a bit. A large factor influencing a lot of the decisions around this final budget is the student count. The student count directly impacts the revenue limit and tax levy. You can see here that during referendum planning, we were assuming a slight decline in enrollment of 22 Revenue Limit Full-Time Equivalents, or FTE. Then, as we went through the summer and ended up not having summer school, we began to build in a large decline in our summer school enrollment, as illustrated here under the preliminary budget column. When we conducted our student count in September, we actually ended up with 106 less student FTEs as opposed to the 22 that was planned. So overall, the Revenue Limit FTEs that are used in calculating the revenue limit, which impacts the tax levy, came in at a total decrease of 145 full-time equivalents. Initially, one might think that a decrease, that would decrease the revenue limit and the resources available. However, there's a one-time declining enrollment exemption built into the revenue limit, where a district actually gets the funding for those lost FTEs, which this year, because of the large number, is having a big impact on the tax levy, which you'll see shortly. In the long run, this decline will mean less resources for the district, but in this one year, it does not. Next, I'll discuss what has changed since the annual meeting in August. The total general operating fund revenue increase in the budget changes being proposed this evening, as compared to the preliminary budget taken to the annual meeting, is just under $1.3 million. What is shown here is a breakdown of the major factors contributing to this increase. The first item is related to grant revenue increases as compared to the preliminary budget. This includes the addition of the federal funding related to COVID relief. You'll see next that adjustments to expenditures were made for the grants as well, with the difference between revenues and expenditures being grant carryover from last year. Second item is an increase in the tax levy, which will be discussed in more detail in a couple of slides. The third item shows a slight decrease in state aid, which usually fluctuates between the annual meeting and the final budget approval based on various local and state factors. The next item is an increase in open enrollment revenue, and there is also an increase in open enrollment expenditures. The fifth item is related to federal E-rate funding for technology projects, which also has a corresponding expenditure increase. Finally, we removed all gate receipt revenue from the budget for athletic contests due to the likelihood that there will not be the ability to host large crowds due to COVID this year. The total general fund expense increase in the budget changes being proposed as compared to the preliminary budget taken to the annual meeting in April is 1.34 million. What's shown here is a breakdown of the major factors contributing to this increase on the expense side. The first item is carryover from last year, as we limited spending as much as possible during the spring closure with the thought of utilizing those funds this year to help offset increased costs related to COVID mitigation. The second item, just as discussed, related to revenue, is adjusting grant expenditures based on awards and carryover from the prior year. The third item is an increase in private school voucher costs as compared to last year. This item and its impact will be more fully discussed as it relates to the tax levy. The next item is salary and benefit changes as compared to the preliminary budget. The decrease here is largely due to a couple of vacant positions, as well as some new hires opting for cash in lieu of insurance as opposed to health and dental insurance that their predecessors might have participated in. The next couple of items, open enrollment E-rate expense, were discussed under the revenue adjustments as well. We also adjusted our utility projection based on our utilization last fiscal year, and while we're not fully closed like we were in the spring, we're likely to be operating virtually at certain points throughout the school year, which will have an impact on our utility usage. The next item is an adjustment to the operating transfer to the Special Education Fund as required, based upon the changes within that fund's revenues and expenditures. Second-to-last item accounts for the Chromebook Monitoring Software, three-year contract purchase that was approved by the Board of Education, and will be offset in future years by reducing the technology budget accordingly. Finally, because of virtual operations, we are likely to spend less on bus fuel, just as we did in the spring during our closure. However, we did not adjust the busing costs at this time, as we are still transporting private school students and some special education students during the closure, and we have a clause in our contract to pay a portion of the contract amount during the As a result of the increase in revenues and expenses outlined, the total general operating fund surplus in the proposed budget has decreased by $54,541. This puts the proposed surplus at 1.24 million, which is just under $61,000 difference from the $1.3 million surplus that was projected during referendum planning. The other thing I'll point out, which I just referenced on the expense side, was carryover from last year. You can see how we ended the year, which was about $600,000 better than we had budgeted prior to COVID. This carryover is being used this year to offset increased expenses related to COVID, such as devices, software, Plexiglas hand sanitizer, cleaning products, and PPE. Here you can see last year's tax levy, what was proposed and approved at the annual meeting in August as a preliminary budget, and what is being proposed now as we finalize the budget. A few items of note regarding the proposed tax levy to draw your attention to. The proposed general fund operating levy is an increase of 22.66%, which includes the first year of the new referendum, as well as a 61% increase in private school vouchers, which you'll see reflected on the next slide as we look more closely at the levy rate. This general fund levy also includes a declining enrollment exemption under the revenue limit of approximately $816,000 due to our larger-than-normal decrease in Revenue Limit FTE related to summer school in our fall enrollment count. The referendum debt service levy is $782,373 less than was planned throughout the referendum and the preliminary budget presented this summer. The sole purpose of a recommended under levy in this fund is to manage the tax rate, which we'll discuss next. The overall tax levy is recommended to increase $472,505 from last year, or an increase of 5.28%. As you can see at the bottom of this table, the tax rate associated with the district will remain the same as last year. However, the tax rate associated with private school vouchers will increase 16 cents to make up for the large increase in private school vouchers this year. As you can see here, the tax rate without the private school vouchers would be the same as it has been the last three years, but with private school voucher increase, the total mill rate will increase 16 cents from last year. What you see in the bars on the right-hand side of this chart, working from left to right, in the green there, are what the district is actually allowed to tax under the revenue limit, where we were projecting prior to COVID during referendum planning, what was approved this summer at the annual meeting in the preliminary budget, and finally, the proposed tax levy rate for this year. As I just mentioned, the difference in the tax rate from this year to last year is entirely attributable to taxing to pay for this year's private school vouchers, which will be deducted from the district's state aid. This year, our aid will be reduced by just under $775,000 for the state to pay for private school vouchers for district resident students. As a result, we're able to levy to make up for that aid loss. What is shown in the upper right is a slide from the DPI's School Finance Puzzle Presentation, which discusses the impact of vouchers on school taxes. I'll just highlight DPI's last statement here that states, "The bottom line is that voucher expansion is being funded indirectly through property taxes." This is why our levy and levy rate increases by the amount of, that's why our levy and our levy rate increases by the amount of private school vouchers claimed by Fort Atkinson residents. The graph here shows a history of the voucher amounts since they began in Fort Atkinson in 2016-17. You can see the exponential growth the last three years. Now I want to discuss and provide some more background around the under levy that is proposed in the debt service fund. As you may recall, the past couple of years, the district has levied more than was required in the debt service fund, in an effort to manage the levy rate from year to year and maintain some consistency for the taxpayers. This also allowed the district to accumulate funds with the intention of prepaying future debt to both save interest costs and structure future debt, so that the tax impact of future capital or operating referenda could be prudently managed. However, because of the unique circumstances surrounding operations this year due to COVID, and what was discussed earlier about enrollment and the tax levy impact this year, it is proposed to reduce the debt service levy this year to manage the tax impact of these unique circumstances. Due to the balance accumulated to prepay debt, the district is able to reduce the debt levy and utilize some of that balance, as illustrated here. This action would allow the district flexibility in the future to see what the next state biennial budget holds for school districts, and the true impact of the COVID pandemic on state and local finances. However, this does not come without some disadvantages. The main disadvantage at this point would be that the district would be prepaying less debt than was originally planned, therefore affecting future capital and operational referenda and the tax impact of those referenda. However, it is also possible to plan over the course of the next year or more to accumulate enough funds in the operational fund and/or utilize the operational fund balance to ultimately carry out the planned prepayments. The main consideration here is that this action would buy the district time to see what unfolds throughout this unique year, as well as the November elections and the next state biennial budget to be considered in the spring of 2021. At this point, the district would have the flexibility to move forward in the most prudent manner possible, given the circumstances and environment at that time. The district does have the option to levy the full amount available, as well as to under levy in the operational fund. There are several reasons why the under levy is being considered in Fund 39, the debt service fund. Prior to COVID, during referendum planning, the message was that taxes would remain stable. Even though things got turned upside down by the pandemic, the district is still able to keep that promise by under levying in Fund 39. We understand that some local taxpayers could be facing some tough personal financial situations due to the pandemic, so managing the tax levy by under levying at least manages the impact this year. There is still an increase in vouchers, which means a decrease in state aid for the district, and in order to make up for that lost state aid, the district will still tax in the operational fund for them, which is the only reason the levy rate is increasing this year. This option affords some good flexibility in decision-making as the future unfolds in the next year or so. The district could still prepay the debt it was planning to by using operational fund or Fund $10. It will allow the district to see what the next state biennial budget holds and the impact of COVID on that budget. It buys time for the district to reduce expenses this year and beyond to make up for the under levy in debt service and use operational dollars to pay off the debt that was planned to be paid off. And it continues to use the debt And it continues to use the debt service levy to manage tax impacts and provide the district flexibility, just as it's done for the past two years and even a couple of times before that. So from here for budget timeline, tonight, the board would set the budget and the tax levy, and that tax levy needs to be certified by November 1st. By November 10th, that tax levy then gets sent to the municipalities. You can connect with OneFort on Twitter at @FortSchools, follow us on Facebook, follow our YouTube channel, and on our business services, on our website, on our Business Services Department is more information about this budget, including a video of tonight's presentation. That concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Demarath, for the wonderful presentation and the video that is available online. I do not personally have any questions for you. Does the board have anything they would like to ask Mr. Demarath or discuss with Mr. Demarath? I think it's worth noting that in our decision-making, we are considering the impact on the community, and we're trying to honor the fact that we know that everyone's probably in a similar boat. And as a representative of the board, I appreciate that, and as a community member. Anything else, anybody?
Could I just highlight, I think, school vouchers certainly come up as a pretty dominant part of this presentation. I think one of the questions that many community members would have is, does that increase in number of dollars, rather, equate to a large number of lost students to parochial schools? And that's not necessarily the case. It may well be the case of existing parochial students' families accessing vouchers where they had not before, and so that doesn't necessarily indicate a huge shift in population. Certainly, there may be some, but it's not representative of that number as a whole. So, I mean, that is a very significant impact for all of the taxpayers in the school district of Fort Atkinson, regardless of whether you're sending your kids to a parochial school or not. But I do think we want to be clear about the increase in number does not directly indicate a larger number of our students moving to a parochial school setting.
Good point. Thank you for the clarification, Dr. Abbott. All right, seeing no discussion, we can go ahead and, thank you very much, Mr. Demarath. We can go ahead and entertain the motion. We can just read that as written.
I think it should be line by line.
Line by line, all right. Buckle up, folks.
Be it resolved that the 2021 revenue and expenditure budgets be adjusted as written
Motion by Mrs. Sneeden, and a second by Mr. Paul, and a roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneeden?
Aye.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Cheney?
Yes, and that passes. Now we will move on to the certification of the tax levy. And that's the, there is a motion for us to certify the tax levy, sorry.
Be it resolved that the tax to fund the 2020-21 school district budget be set at $18,101,652, and that the necessary certification of said levy be forwarded to the clerk of the city of Fort Atkinson and the clerk of each appropriate townships.
Motion by Mrs. Sneeden, a second by Mrs. Reynolds, and a roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mrs. Sneeden?
Aye.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Cheney?
Yes, and that passes. Now Dr. Abbott will have the enrollment report.
Yes, as the board is aware, each year, public schools take account of students on the third Friday of September. These enrollment numbers directly impact school funding throughout the budget year, as well as a number of other school operations. Mr. Demarath found this going through some old files, and believe me, I wish that school enrollment was as simple as it was back in 1936. Compared to all of the spreadsheets and layers of tables and everything else you can imagine, it does get pretty complicated. But in reality, this is an extremely complicated aspect of our operations, and students aren't counted a number of different ways based on need. As the numbers Mr. Demarath just used are enrollment numbers that are considered differently than those that we have students in seats. This evening, we will be looking for my purposes with you at the actual enrollment numbers, that is, actual students in classroom seats, should we be in person, of course, in the school district of Fort Atkinson. In overall physical count, we were up in 2018 from the year prior, then lower last year, and then lower again this year. Now, to be very, very clear, we knew this was coming, given census and other information. This decline is not all related to COVID-19, nor the tough decisions districts and families have been forced to make over these past several months. You will see that we do have 112 fewer students in our school seats this year, but regarding open enrollment, we continue to be on the upside with more kids coming in than we have going out. We have a marginal increase from last year, but would certainly like to see that continue in the positive direction moving forward. We definitely benefit from that provision for families to choose their school as they have in the past. Related specifically to COVID-19, though, a few observations. We have certainly lost some students to establish virtual schools, those that have existed for years outside of our school district, as well as other schools or school districts, and a few to homeschooling as well. There has not been a mass exodus, given learning format necessities. We clearly are keenly aware of the need to be maintaining as large a student population as possible. This slide illustrates the difference between grade levels from one year to the next. So this is to say, how many 10th graders did we have last year compared to this year's enrollment? In this example, our 11th grade class grew by 32 students from one year to the next. And again, to be very clear, that these are different groups of students. There is some volatility, rather, in these numbers that does occur from year to year. Along the bottom, you will see that our enrollment this year is indeed to 112 students lighter than last year. But again, much of this was attributed to an unusually small kindergarten population. With, those of you may recall, last year I had a similar comment. We have an unusually small group that was then 4K, now five-year-old kindergarten students. Interestingly, I did reach out to all of the area school districts surrounding us, and virtually every single one of them have a significantly smaller group, either in their 4K or their five-year-old kindergarten population, which is something we talked about last year as well. This particular pocket of kids is not special to Fort Atkinson, but is by census a much smaller group for most of our neighboring districts as well. Our current kindergarten population is 116, significantly lower than years prior, and we will monitor this closely as we, other districts, to determine if this is a blip in one grade level of students, or if it is a different trend. You will notice that our current 4K population is 151, much closer to the typical level of enrollment we would see with that age group. There is some thought that some families have opted to enter their students in five-year-old kindergarten and may have waited to push into a four-year program, or have made decisions based on the pandemic with their young learners. We will again be vigilant in our four- and five-year-old kindergarten roundup and orientation process next spring. You may be aware that we definitely worked things differently last spring, and really, I think, did a very nice job of making our options known to families in our community. Personally, though, I like to look at the data through this lens, and that is that of a cohort group, and that is to say, the same group of students from one year to the next. Aside from our kindergarten number, this slide shows that while our total enrollment is down a bit from last year, we are not losing an exceptionally large group of students once they are enrolled in our schools. There is some fluctuation that is expected as people move into and away from our district and/or into other schools for other school options. And obviously, COVID-19 is impacting school enrollment in all school districts, not just Fort Atkinson, and that's been a headline, I think, not just in Wisconsin, but nationally as well. So when you look at this slide, you will see, obviously, that kindergarten group we've talked of a couple of different times is significantly smaller, relatively stable from what we saw last year. We did have a couple of age groups that went down. The largest was a group of 11, and then you'll see some groups that went up significantly. I mentioned the senior class is up by 19. We gained a number of students going from grade eight to grade nine, but we have not seen a significant, I think, exodus, I suppose to overuse the word, that people had thought we might, given the circumstances of late. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about enrollment.
I had no questions about enrollment. Did any of the board?
No.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott. Fantastic analysis. Moving on, we will now entertain Mr., or actually, Mr. Skellon will entertain us with
All right. So there's been no shortage of challenges this year, and it would be an understatement to say that some of them were somewhat technical. But the good news is, is that IT people love solving good challenges. So in between the ebb and flow of seemingly crippling anxiety, the best part of the job is when that wave subsides and you find a seemingly perfect solution to like a really good technical conundrum, and we'd had quite a few. So as is tradition, it's truly a team effort, and we've got a really great one. It's a lean crew, I know, but I'm really, I couldn't be more proud of this team and their seemingly impossible accomplishments. Joel on the left, Nate, Zach, Amanda, and the old guy. So back in March, when all the schools were shutting down, we were ahead of the game in certain areas and behind in others. For example, we switched all of our teachers to laptops instead of desktops, something we implemented back in 2017. We had tested multiple flavors of what's called a VPN connection, which allows our staff to access files and resources remotely. We also had the ability to remotely push out software and updates, something normally required to be onsite. Over the last year and a half, the district had also challenged our educators to obtain their Google Level 1 educator certification, providing them with skills needed to integrate the online collaborative tools into our students' educational journey. We were not so prepared in other areas, so we needed devices, and we needed them fast. And we didn't have a traditional one-to-one program where our devices go home with the kids. Instead, they stayed in the classroom, neatly tucked away in carts, and we ransacked the district. Every Chromebook in charge that we could find, and it felt really, really wrong, too. I gotta, I've gotta apologize to some of our librarians, like the tidiness they had in those carts, and we just, we just had to just tear them apart. But we did it out of necessity, because most of our families needed a mobile device. So that was fun. There's the library at the high school, and all those milk crates on the right there are completely full of Chromebooks. We stood out multiple checkout opportunities for families to get their devices that they needed. We leaned on the bus company to help us deliver alongside their meals, and in the spring, we checked out around 1,500 devices, and today, we have over 2,200 devices out to While all this COVID stuff was going on, we had another fun project underway that I just, I gotta mention. So we planned for this for about two years, and just this summer, it was finished. The district currently utilizes local carriers' fiber optic cables to connect all of our buildings, and as more technology is being utilized in our schools, like phones and the internet, they all require these cables to get connected, that dependency on something that somebody else owned didn't really sit well with me. So running our own cables from one side of town to the other seemed like a perfect opportunity to help our neighbors at the city. So over the summer, the district and the city laid about three and a half miles of fiber optic cable underground, ensuring our technical resilience over the next 30 to 40-some years or however long that fiber optic cable lasts underground. We partnered with the city, and this community area network now will allow us to share things like security, phones, and other technical systems. We're calling it Fort Atkinson Shared Technical Resources, or FASTER, and it's a great collaboration that will benefit the district and the community. And again, I've always said that what's good for the district is good for the community, and what's good for the community is certainly good for the district. So I'm really looking forward to the opportunities that this brings. So now it's May, schools wrapping up in the most anticlimactic way since everybody's at home, and the last day of school, like, strangely felt like just another day. It was, it was really weird. Anyway, we know that we're never going back to the way it was, so we ordered 650 brand-new Chromebooks to support our new one-to-one program where every kid gets their own device. Well, in between trade embargoes with China, single-source manufacturing of certain components, and every school on the planet practically buying up Chromebooks, our devices are still not, not here yet. And of the many stocks I should have invested in, like Zoom and Tesla, Chromebooks were another one. But I digress. We start planning for the fall for three different learning formats. First, in-person, like nothing happened ever at all, which was very wishful thinking. Second, exclusively virtual, or third, a hybrid of the two. We invested in wireless headsets to allow our teachers to move freely throughout the classroom, allowing the virtual kids to hear crystal clear. We invested in document cameras with extension cables to be the eyes, so to speak, of our virtual students. These devices allow virtual students to move throughout the classroom with their in-person peers when we were in person. It also untethers our teachers from their devices. And then we surveyed families on internet accessibility and procured mobile hotspots to help those families in need. You don't really realize the luxury of quality internet until there's a pandemic and you're working from home and your crummy home internet goes down two or three times a day. We invested in supplementary software, like Screencastify for making videos, Padlet for collaboration and engagement, and Zoom for video conferencing. And Zoom got a bad rap out the gate with like security concerns, but we stuck with them due to their transparency and agility in addressing those concerns. Fort Schools is part of the Student Data Privacy Alliance. It's a coalition of districts nationwide that put, they put a great deal of pressure on these software companies like Zoom to ensure that they're protecting our students' data, and we kind of put our foot down with Zoom and said, you know, we're not gonna pay for a product, for a company that won't sign a contract that says that they're not gonna sell our kids' stuff, kids' information. So happy to say that we got that contract established, and with the help of the DPI and CISA purchasing, we have a state contracted pricing with Zoom at a fraction of the listed cost. It's a, it's a huge win for districts big and small that are normally left to negotiate those deals independently. We learned a few things since March, like passwords are a struggle for adults, they're even a bigger struggle for kindergartners and first graders. So this time, we sent home these QR codes that they can wave in front of their Chromebook, and it allows them to securely get signed in to send into their device. We also know that specialized software like SolidWorks for 3D modeling and Photoshop for digital art, they just don't work on Chromebooks well, so we set up a way for our virtual kids to be able to remotely access the computer labs in our buildings. So rather than investing in a virtual desktop infrastructure, which is incredibly expensive, I've gotten several quotes on it, we were able to utilize the existing computing power in our labs to run those specialized pieces of software and make them available through a Chromebook. It's a pretty nifty solution to a complicated dilemma using free and open source software. And one thing that I'm most excited about, it's not technical, actually, it's about pedagogy, or how we go about teaching. We can put the top-of-the-line equipment and tools in any classroom, like, that's, that's easy. But what the OneFort Forward Success Team is doing on how to integrate that technology into the classroom through blended learning, that has been really, really amazing to see. Everybody learns a little bit differently. Some people can just sit and get and retain, other peoples have to read and learn in their own head and digest. If you're like me, you need to learn by doing, by trying and failing and finding success. Others work better collaboratively as a group, and the work that we're doing with Flip And the work that, that we're doing with flipped classrooms and blended learning gives every student of every learning style a chance to find success. So teaching with technology is more than having access to a device. It is about leveraging and optimizing the potential of technology to spark curiosity, enhance learning, and develop skills to further prepare our students to become digital citizens. Thank you for the opportunity to showcase some of the very cool, exciting things happening in the tech department. And I welcome any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skellon. First, I would like to say congratulations for the work that you and TechEd have been up to. I mean, it's been, you know, integral to existing and staying, staying on top of things.
Thank you.
I wanted to highlight the, is it the SDPA? Is that what you would give it, the Secure Digital Protection?
Oh, the, the Student Data Privacy?
There you go, Student Data Privacy Agreement. Yeah, that, nice job on, on that. That's great, fantastic.
Thank you, it's important.
Yeah, it's extremely important. And it was not something that I think most of us would have even considered how important. So I wanted to highlight that. The only question I had is, is that a DOS 6 book?
Yeah.
We're not using DOS 6.
No, so.
It actually died after six, after seven.
We, we did use DOS at one time, but like, much like the 1936 photo that Dr. Abbott showed, there's a lot of really, really fun old technical stuff. So if you ever get a chance to pop up in my office, I kind of have like a wall showcasing some of the old stuff we've found. Like the original ticketing system was like notepads that had, that you wrote on and wrote your ticket out for your tech problem? Yeah.
Well, I'm glad we've moved beyond that. But I wanted to clarify that we've at least moved on, moved on to DOS 7 with Windows 95.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
So I don't have any questions. I think it was a really well-done report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do any of the board have any questions or discussion that we'd like to have? That we need Mr. Skellon to stay for?
Yeah, I'll chime in here a little bit. Yeah, so I think really the last seven months, call it, this is, in my eyes, probably been one of the biggest accomplishments as a district we've been able to put together. To go from where we were seven months ago to where we are today is, is, you know, there's great gains in that. So I appreciate all the work that you've been putting in on that. But we're kind of moving forward as we get, as we get past this. What do you think is the biggest hurdle that you and your team need to investigate or dig into a little bit more?
Yeah, well, one of the, one of the big challenges we're seeing right now is internet access at home in Fort Atkinson. We have still a lot of family members that live in areas of the community where there just isn't any options. They, you know, they are in the middle of a valley, so any hotspot you give them doesn't have a tower in range. There, like, there's no local carriers like AT&amp;T or Charter out there. So we're seeing that and it's, that's a tough one. I don't have a solution to that one. So what we've been doing is we've been setting up outdoor Wi-Fi spots. There's not much you can do.
What percentage of households do you think don't have access to the internet speeds they need? Would you guess?
When we did our initial survey, we came back with 77, I think, unique addresses that didn't have the internet for one way, for one reason or the other, whether it be they couldn't afford it or it wasn't available.
Yeah, substantial.
Yeah, yes, it is. Outdoor Wi-Fi is something that we're gonna be addressing. We didn't really realize that we needed it until we were doing virtual gym class. So we're gonna be standing up some, some outdoor Wi-Fi solutions in the next, in the next year.
Yeah, really great, thank you.
So you said we're still waiting on some devices, Chromebooks?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know how long that's gonna be or?
So my vendors are telling me November, but they also told me five to six weeks back in October. I'm sorry, back in August even. So yeah, I'm hopeful, hopeful it'll be here soon.
Are they, is that causing us any issues right now?
The biggest issue is, is we've been leaning on some older devices that we've had that are just like at the end of their life and they're struggling to run things like Zoom and multiple browsers or tabs open at the same time. They just don't have the horsepower underneath to run those modern applications. We have been seeing some issues with that. Unfortunately, I can't 3D print Chromebooks yet.
If the board recalls, we did order those Chromebooks earlier than most districts at that. In fact, we did so prior to the June board meeting, I think back at the end of May, actually hoping that you were going to be good with that for this very reason. So weirdly, we're still sort of at the front of the queue.
Yes.
For all of the reasons that DJ listed off, but we're still at the front of the queue.
Yep, yep. The manufacturer has informed us that it's a first-in, first-out fulfillment. It's not like Madison's gonna get the priority because they ordered more.
I think, I think all of our divisions have really been doing incredible, incredible work. I feel like this presentation is like the, the highlight reel of the Super Bowl win. I mean, really, the, the depth behind any one of the elements that Mr. Skellon highlighted this evening could be presentations on themselves. And just mentioning a little bit to your, the faster fiber optic network, you know, the city has been able to tap into that literally. And that is going to be an excellent use for our city municipalities. And also a run out to the industrial park on the edge of town. And so I think that that sense of collaboration and community is something that certainly OneFort is all about. But I think DJ and his department has really been at the forefront of looking through that lens as well. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I guess I'm just curious, if there's something you think that we or even the city could do to help those, you know, those issues where we have families without internet or affordability, anything like that? I understand the connecting, especially if you live out in the country or in a valley, is quite difficult. I'm just curious if you have anything, any perspective on that?
Yeah, I've been thinking about that quite a bit. And having access to some of the larger city structures, like for instance, the water tower, might offer some options to seek, get line of sight to some of those homes that aren't otherwise in view from cell carrier towers. So we may be able to stand up what's called like air fiber, where you can do point-to-point connections to some of those remote, remote households. You know, there is some very early talks of allowing a local cell carrier to put stealth tower, stealth poles on a couple of our facilities. And we made sure that we would be able to utilize those for, with our equipment as well, so that we could utilize that height to maybe reach some of those homes. So there are some options that we might have in the future, but it just takes time and some planning to stand those up. But we're, I'm certainly thinking about all of that.
Great, great. I really appreciate the perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skellon.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we will now hear from Dr. Abbott with the much anticipated school opening update.
We do not take for granted the support of our OneFort community as they continue to provide our school district. These continue to be times the likes of which none of us have ever experienced. The Board of Education, the staff, and the administration have been working tirelessly to make the best and safest decisions for our students and families, as well as our larger Fort Atkinson community. Sadly, we have grown all too accustomed to being forced to make decisions and operate our schools in ways that instantly divide our community. We have been and continue to be in a no-win position. When a decision was made to stop, or when a decision is made, we stop hearing from one side of the issue and begin hearing from the other and vice versa. And I'm quite certain that will be no different this evening. I believe it's also fair to say that we would all like COVID-19 to be done and well behind us. We all want our students safely back in our schools. We all want what's best for our community. We all want to find a greater sense of unity once again within our school district. And it is hard when we hear that some may believe those feelings are untrue. To all of those who continue to support us, we really do say thank you. We have, we have not come to the end of this pandemic road that none of us have asked to be on. And thank you in advance for your continued support as we continue on this journey with one another. I think all of us have become accustomed to seeing this involved in my presentations over these past many months. And this is continuing to be a piece that we go back to. And we looked at this again last year. And part of my presentation will be, while we often report the one statistic that is a primary focus of the Jefferson County guidance, there are a myriad of other elements that the board and the administration and others continue to monitor and integrate into some of the decision-making that has happened in the past. We continue to look at community input at Jefferson County infection status, recommendations and guidelines from other authoritative and agencies, the feasibility of safety precautions for students and staff, the academic delivery and student learning considerations, comparable districts programming and their status, advisement from our partner organizations, understanding what our organizational and legal risks might be, as well as federal and state compliance. And again, this is a tool we continue to use. You'll also recall that we've looked at this decision-making scale. That is, what level or type or format of instruction is possible based on the status of the pandemic here in Jefferson County? We're currently, I think everyone is keenly aware in Level One, and that is with no in-person instruction and that we are in an all-virtual setting. One of the things we continue to hear, as I mentioned before, from our community is that the board's decision to move to all-virtual and that only single learning environment is based on one sole statistic, when in reality, there are additional considerations as well. As everyone is aware, county, state, and federal agencies do use the seven-day rolling average of new positive case rates per 100,000. Additionally, positivity rates, community spread, contact tracing results, hospitalization rates, as well as capacity, active positive cases in our schools, upward or downward trends in the data, staff absences, and more, all play into this equation. Our board has opted to engage the Jefferson County guidance as is written, a decision that was appreciated by some in our community and is obviously not as appreciated by others. One of the things we have developed for the board to consider this evening is a version of our decision-making scale that looks more to trends and allows for some variance in how we matriculate through these levels or the ability to provide some in-person instruction. This scale would allow a range of positive cases, as well as other factors, and how we matriculate between those potential learning formats and mitigation strategies. So as an example, Level Two, and these are all numbers that the board can discuss or not, or not even entertain later, but just by way as an example, in this illustration, Level Two is saying the positivity rate would be between 20 and 30 on a seven-day average case rate. And/or other Jefferson County guidance considerations, which I've mentioned before, positivity rate, community spread, contact tracing, hospitalization rates, active positive cases in our schools, as well as some district considerations. Again, is that trend moving up? Is that trend coming down? But also staff absences, which we'll come back to here in a few minutes. One of the considerations I would put before the board for discussion later this evening is engaging this type of framework or version that would allow us some flexibility as we're looking at trends in the data. So clearly, the data is so significantly high that in our current metrics, we're unable to entertain in-person learning based on the metrics that we're operating under. The idea here is that as the data comes down, and let's just say we're in a spot where we're feeling really good, where we started the beginning of the year and while we were concerned, we were sitting in Level Three, we were sub-20, and we were feeling like things were going to be pretty stable for us throughout the year. The idea here is that once we're in that type of position, whatever the board defines these numbers to be, among other different variables, let's say the numbers start heading up again. And I think what people, some people have been sharing is like, well, you know, once you hit 25, then boom, you're virtual only. And the idea here is that we start looking at trends a little bit more. For instance, in that example, if the number is going up, we're starting at 20, we're starting to get a little concerned. We hit 25, we don't hit the panic button yet. We hit 25, we go up. And as we've seen, I think the community is all watching daily what the rates are, those can continue to climb or in some cases go down. And what we're looking for in the future is the ability to begin looking at things over time as opposed to a certain point in time. And I believe something like this is something the board could consider with whatever types of modifications, that A, would account for a variety of different elements that we are considering, as well as looking at the data as trends. And those types of definitions, the board could consider however they would like moving forward. So with that, updates from Jefferson County COVID data. This is from this afternoon. Here we see Jefferson County's daily positivity rate as a percentage of positive tests. The same nest, same number of tests have been given over the past several days. And unfortunately, the rates are between 20 and 45% positive results. And those are some pretty significant spikes if you look all the way back in that data. Here also, we hear from a number of people talking about communicability among student populations, which is clearly evidenced in the science as to what that is and what that isn't. Also being mindful though, that we have employees moving through a variety of those other age groups, of which you are seeing some, some differences in numbers going up and down over the course of time. And here we have the average county case rate per 100,000. And as we all know, this is the statistic that is potentially viewed as the most important or one that is preeminently noted in the Harvard model that the Jefferson County Health Department has adopted. And currently, that in the past, the past several days, the average is 60.8. But over the past seven rolling day average, which is what we keep track of, today was confirmed to be at 62. As you recall, and I think everyone has committed to memory now, that 25 was the threshold that at one point, we were convinced that perhaps we would be able to miss and then have skyrocketed since. We have definitely seen some volatility in that number. You know, I've been excited about day, you know, trends of one. And I email you and say like, we're down today. And we did have a couple of days where things were trending down and like, you know, life starts feeling really good. And then, and then boom, we pop back up. So again, we've been sitting sort of between the 50s and low 60s now for a period of time. So the board is aware of this, but I thought it'd be good for the community to be aware of something else. In an effort to continually monitor the county metrics and the, their effects on our OneFort community, we have engaged the services of an independent expert in probability modeling who shares with us three times a week what you see here. And this monitoring system allows us to see the probability of case rate meeting a threshold for the district opening or closing, as well as the trend of the infection data in our county, usually before the county updates their dashboard. They're pulling data from the state level and then putting this into the model that they've created. Similar to weather forecasts, this system gives us updated forecasts in advance of when we might be able to reopen, given the current metrics. And when we do reopen, what direction that data is going and if there's a possibility of a closure in the, the near future. So we are continually getting an idea of where the county data is headed and what that means for our district, our students, as well as our community. You can see here that the midpoint for a possible reopening is November 16th. That's the 50% tile, which is one week later than the forecast was on Friday due to infection rates over this past weekend. So more detail here, which I included in the presentation in, in board docs that the community can access. But I did want to highlight that we are working with other professionals who are unrelated to the county health department, but are giving us some, some depth of understanding in controlling for some of the different mitigation strategies that, that we and other districts are engaging in. Also, as many as are aware, we created and launched our School District of Fort Atkinson COVID-19 Dashboard a few weeks ago. The dashboard is updated once a week, and that is on Fridays, and can be found on our website under the Fall 2020 tab titled COVID-19 Updates. These numbers come from self-reports to the School District of Fort Atkinson and reporting from the Jefferson County Health Department. So as you may recall or may assume, in this time of virtual-only instruction, we are not doing contact tracing of our own because students and staff are not in our building. So we are relying on people self-reporting, both on the staff side as well as the family and student side. And I think we can all assume that we're not hearing all of those cases, whether they be quarantines or positive COVID cases coming from students or families at this point. So just as a point though, this is the student dashboard that was posted. So just as a point, though, this is the student dashboard that was posted on Friday and over the weekend. We know that we have at least one more student positive that came in today. Here we have the staff dashboard. And as an additional point, I'd just like to mention, when we were in session, Mrs. Hollenberger and others working through our contact tracing was unbelievable. A, it's an incredibly complicated, time-consuming task that was often done in hours. We're seeing now Jefferson County's lag time in contact tracing is significant. In fact, in most instances, when Mrs. Hollenberger and I are notified of positive cases, it's actually in Day 11, 12, or 13 of the 14-day quarantine. So we are concerned above that lag time. If we were to update these charts today, as I mentioned, we do have an additional positive student, we have two additional positive staff from over the weekend, and then three more of our staff that are in required quarantine. So what does all of this mean to us related to decision-making? And I guess I'd like to give just a little bit of context. The significance of the positive case data has not allowed us to implement an in-between in-person option. We have been developing multiple plans for in-person options all along. So you might consider how we started, all of one, all of the other, virtual option for all who wanted, five days a week for everyone else. And as much as we appreciate the ideas and suggestions we've been hearing about, an alternate day model or limiting student populations, which are great, those are things that we've had in the works for several months now, but given the adopted metrics and given numbers like 62 and other items on that list, in-person, aside from very small microgroups, has not been possible for us to engage even those ideas. Other districts have and continue to close, given too few staff to operate and/or given illness and abundant contact tracing. So we often hear, of course, you're closed, others are not, they are making it work. And I think you can definitely make a case for days in-person or perhaps better than no days in-person. But just to give you an idea, Cambridge was virtual, went back to in-person, they are now closed to in-person due to not having enough staff to operate after they reopen. Early childhood to grade 2 are closed until at least November 2nd, grade 3 to 5 closed until November at least 16th, grade 6 through 12 virtual only until the end of first semester. Jefferson was open in-person, as we know, they closed to in-person until the earliest this upcoming Monday, due to not having enough staff or custodial staff as well to operate their school, so they've been closed for two weeks now as well. Johnson Creek was virtual only to start, they came back in-person, their high school closed last week due to positive cases as well as contact tracing, they reopened again today, and I know that's a day-to-day monitor for them. Whitewater, I think we're all keenly aware, started in-person virtual only to begin the year, and then started some in-person classes over the last couple of weeks, and they are very actively monitoring their student populations as well as staffing levels. Lake Mills, currently, they are in-person, but they have also had closures due to positive case rates over these past several weeks as well. Milton has a virtual and in-person option as we started the year. They have seen an uptick in contact tracing and positive cases, and they are currently noting some significant concerns. And I was in a call today with all of the Badger Conference superintendents, and it's a real mixed bag between all of the schools that are in our conference. But those who are open to in-person have been opening and closing without exception based on positive rates and/or not having enough staff to operate, as well as those close-contact tracing elements. So I think as much as some of us have this memorized, it's important, though, also to review what the Jefferson County guidance is related to when students and staff would shift to a virtual learning environment given a positive case. And essentially, what these words say is that those who are in the same classroom or any other room for more than a cumulative time of 15 minutes within six feet of a COVID-19 positive person, or had any physical contact with someone who tested positive for COVID-19, would shift to virtual learning for 14 days from the time of the exposure. It says, "We strongly recommend that all who are exposed to be tested for COVID-19 if possible." So a couple of local examples here in the School District of Fort Atkinson, when we were in-person. We had a situation where one positive teacher placed six other staff members and four classrooms of students in quarantine. From that instance, another positive staff member emerged, and you can see how that web does to work through a system rather quickly. In another situation, when we were open to in-person, a positive teacher, by the way things worked, placed 66 students and three other staff members in quarantine. So I think sometimes it's hard for people to realize, well, even if you're open, why is it that one would need to close down so you have a positive case? It comes down to where is that positive case? Where has there been that close contact, and what does that contact tracing look like? So those numbers can move very, very rapidly. And in some cases, other districts have seen not just staff in quarantine, but the number of staff ill, to the point of not being able to work remotely either. Additionally, we have begun a survey of our own, just because we are very curious, of those adults and students who have found, been found to be close contacts via our own contact tracing, as I was mentioning earlier. Of those contact tracing that identify group, 122 of those close contacts responded to our survey, which is a fairly good response rate. Of the 122 responded, 36 decided to get tested with showing one positive result. So we're also trying to look for when you are considered a close contact in student populations as well as adult populations, how many end up getting tested, how many end up with symptoms, how many end up with a positive result. So that's information that we continue to accumulate as we go as well. And even those districts who have not opted to follow the guidance as we have, the board has, from Jefferson County, most if not all are honoring the three positive cases for students or staff in a face-to-face learning area. If those are confirmed within one week, virtual learning would need to take place for three days regardless of the student population size. And I don't have data tables for you, but in most cases, when schools or districts have needed to close due to this positive case number, it's been more than three days. There have been other circumstances where it's needed to be a longer period of closure. So shifting gears a little bit, talking about our virtual-only learning formats, when we are in a virtual-only learning environment, a few changes have been made or will be put in place in the near future. So our elementary school schedule, students will, beginning November 2nd, if we continue to be in a virtual-only setting, will be in session with direct instruction until 1:30 daily, which is a change in schedule. We'll also be adding social studies and science to the elementary program that's virtual-only as well. The middle school will not see any significant changes to their virtual-only schedule, and high school students and families, I'm sure are aware that on October 19th, a modified version of their original schedule, just based on experience with students, was a better fit, and that started just a week or so ago. So my guess is that our model, just like any other district's models, will continue to evolve over time, and we would rather make adjustments along the way than stick with something that we do not believe is as effective as it could be. Again, like most things these days, our virtual model has its advocates and its detractors. For some, the days are too long, and for some, the days are too short. Some want all of the content areas represented, and others appreciate that not all of the content areas are represented. Some understand the need for teacher preparation and collaboration time, and others believe that staff may have too much time without students. And of course, that list goes on. Just as it would be if we were back in February, any school model is less than perfect depending on one's point of view. As a result, we will continue to make adjustments along the way as we learn more about what is and what is not working, as well as we'd like it to for our learners. Upon return to in-person learning environments, sorry, we would like to make some adjustments or have the board consider some adjustments as well. We would like to suggest an updated in-person learning model. The elementaries would return to our pre-virtual-only operations, and again, then obviously return to a regular or full school day as we were post, or pre, rather, our virtual-only operations. But at the high school and the middle school, we would seek an alternate day schedule. So all of our students, or half of our students would be in session two corresponding, or consecutive days, rather. The other half would be the opposite two days, and those days that they're not in-person, they would be in mirrored learning. So just by the way, we're scheduled, all of the middle school and high school kids would have all of their classes in-person, then the next two days would be all of their classes mirrored and vice versa. This, we hope, would improve in cohorting, limit contact tracing quarantine impacts for students and staff, limit the need to return to virtual-only instruction as much as possible, as a reduced population would allow, and then, of course, increase physical distancing given that student population. So again, when we are able, based on the metrics or based on however the board moves forward, our in-person learning, we would have the elementaries return as we started the school year. And again, our middle school and high school would look at an alternating day schedule. All of those details clearly shared by those buildings' administrations as soon as those types of decisions were made. And they would be looking to continue that alternate day schedule through the end of second quarter. And speaking of second quarter, as everyone is aware, we did reach out to families as we asked to solicit their learning format choices for second quarter, and here's how that played out for us. We did see a slight uptick in those wanting in-person instructions. So nothing significant, but we do end up with about 23 of families about two weeks ago saying they would prefer to stay in a virtual-only environment, while 77 would choose to return in-person when possible. And I guess I just would like to mention that the COVID-19 pandemic truly has impacted everyone, regardless of role, position, and community, and family, and everything else. We are keenly aware that some people are unhappy and that another group will eventually be unhappy. That really is sort of the theme of the pandemic for all of us in school operations. I do think schools have become a bit of a lightning rod in our communities for people's angst and displeasure with all of the things that are going on in our community and society, and to many of us personally and socially and as families related to the pandemic as well. Beyond schools and schooling, though, we do need to remember that the pandemic is having a significant impact on all parts of people's lives, which in turn does impact reactions and interactions and the like, as well as how it is that we move the school district forward in the future. I'd like to talk just for a moment as well about mirrored learning. So we were in a mirrored learning environment, of course, so we had some people opt for virtual only, and then in our classrooms, we had some kids in-person, and the virtual component is what we are calling mirrored learning. So a couple of things I'd like to mention here. While it seems like a very long time ago and that we did mirrored learning for a very long period of time, depending on your teaching position, we did mirrored learning for either eight and a half days up to 11 days. So we didn't do mirrored learning for an incredibly lengthy period of time. Granted, it felt like an eternity to some people, like totally, totally understood. So a few considerations for adjustments when the time comes for us to return in-person. I mentioned last time I stood here that this was like a first year of teaching for everyone, right? And I think what I probably left off is it's like a first year of teaching times two, because there are two new learning formats, and that's like, first, you're teaching twice. So it's really not an understatement to mention the amount of effort and work and expertise and time and energy that teaching and other staff are putting into making however these learning formats work. As an example, every lesson needs to be planned twice and then executed differently, in many cases differently than people have ever done before in their careers. There are issues with logistics of materials, availability and pickup, best-laid plans and things are working as smoothly as they can, but it's still, from a teaching point of view, limits what you can and can't do. The spontaneity or some of the things that you've been able to do in the past isn't there. Monitoring versus engaging with all students, it's one thing to know they're on the screen, it's another to feel like you're fully engaged with them, both in-person and in that virtual environment. And then varying levels of family support. What do kids have at home during those episodes of learning? And that list could obviously go on. One of the things that we would ask the board to consider at this point is some additional preparation time for our teachers. In August, when we were talking mirrored learning, we didn't know if it would be a need, but at this point, we do know that it's a need, and then we're no longer guessing. So what we would ask the board to consider is additional early release time for second quarter, and then we can take a look later as to whether or not that would continue. But provided that we are in an in-person learning model, we acknowledge that there really shouldn't be any need for inclement weather days. We do have the ability to shift to a virtual-only environment, which means that I could call off school for a pandemic, but I have yet to do it for inclement weather, which seems odd to me. I mean, there, I'm sure will be a circumstance now that I've said that, but what we would do, though, is follow the current early release day schedule and dismiss at 1:30 every Monday. It is not for a minute, as I mentioned back in August when we asked for some additional time, we definitely know the impact that this has on families. We also know the impact some additional planning time for teachers would have in order to support them in this mirrored learning format. So again, what we'd be looking at is when we return in-person, we would have a Monday early release day beginning at 1:30, all of our students would be fed, all of our students would have in-person learning the first portion of that day, and then we'd be dismissed and bused or however they get home at 1:30. And then we can reevaluate that at the end of second quarter. So after all that, there are a number of things, which I'm sure is not surprising, for the board to consider or at least have discussion on this evening. The first of which is to discuss and affirm or determine the metrics for building and/or district mitigation strategies and/or closure due to COVID-19, potentially the decision-making scale or some version or similar format to what I shared earlier in my presentation. Discuss and potentially approve the alternating day schedule for secondary schools through second quarter. Consider the additional early release time I just mentioned for teacher preparation when we are in mirrored learning. Consider the winter activities recommendations. The board received information from the high school earlier regarding suggestions for winter activities. I believe that is in the Board Docs agenda as well, some discussion with that. And then also, we would appreciate some discussion on interior building use for non-district groups, as the board is aware. Currently with Board action, it prevents all interior building use aside from the pools for organizations outside of the school district. I end every time, and it seems silly to say, but truly, if we want our kids in school, we really need to fully commit to the COVID-19 mitigation strategies. It is not going away unless we force it to go away, and that will take all of us, and it will take all of us all the time. That is certainly something that we are aspiring to, and we hope that the community continues to rally behind as well. So with that, I certainly would be happy to answer any questions or participate in whatever discussion you would like. But again, these are the requests for board discussion or action items this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott. Very comprehensive presentation. Thank you. All right, so let's hash this out, guys, girls, or folks.
Can we talk about each one of these individually? I think there's a lot to cover.
Yeah, yes, very good suggestion, Mrs. Neen. We will address all these individually. So do we want to start with the metrics? I have to admit, I was spending a portion of the presentation looking at the metrics, and I'd like to just preface that I personally, I don't think anybody else here just looks at one number and says, oh, that's what's guiding our decision-making. I mean, I'm looking at Wisconsin Hospital Association, I'm looking at the DHS, I'm looking at our county, I'm looking at our internals, I'm looking at neighboring districts that have public information. There's a lot of information out there, and I wouldn't say that it conflicts, I would say that it doesn't, it just is a matter of how rosy of a picture you choose to paint with your data, but, I mean, for example, 81% of hospital beds in the coalition of hospitals in Wisconsin are in use. It's a lot, I mean, it seems like a lot, right? It seems like a lot. It seems like a large number, and that's increasing steadily since the beginning of the month. Same with ICU beds, same with ventilator use, all the ventilator use is still relatively low, nineteen percent of the ventilators available to people are being utilized. So those are just some data points that I thought were interesting and kind of give people some idea into how we're, or how I personally am looking at the numbers and not looking at just that whatever the 25% or whatever, the percent of positives that were 100,000. So when it comes to the metrics, I think we could sit here all night probably in debate, finding new metrics. So, I mean, that's kind of where I stand on that personally, but I very much welcome and excited to hear what everyone else has to say about this.
Where do we start here, right?
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, here we go, all right. Yeah, I mean, I think we've all kind of like gone back and forth about this over the last, you know, five weeks or so here. I think we have all varying degrees of what we're looking at and seeing and understanding and all that. You know, personally, for me, I feel maybe a little bit different of how we're looking at these and what we're looking at. It feels like every time we meet, we're kind of like, as Adam said, I can't remember how many meetings ago, we just keep on moving the cheese, right? You know, if that feeling is there. My overall feeling with where this has headed is I continually, when I wake up at night, what am I thinking about? And it's how can we figure out a way to get, safely get the kids back into school? I think the more time that goes on, I become more concerned about the mental health of our kids, and I think it wasn't a consideration on September 21st or 22nd when I got a phone call from Mark saying, hey, what do you think about this? To be quite honest with you, mental health wasn't even a, you know, wasn't a thing because I thought at that point it was going to be a week or two where we'd back into it. Now we're here, we sit five weeks afterwards and increasingly becoming more concerned about the mental health of our students. So when we take a look at metrics of what we're looking at, it gets a little bit muddy because there's nothing that says, hey, our mental health of our kids is this. And that's why I'm most conflicted about it, I'm seeing it in my own kids, I'm seeing it in other kids, and if we, if at some point we say, okay, we're going to take a look at this, you know, next board reading presumably, you know, that feels like a long time away for me to continue doing 100% virtual like we are today. And I say that knowing, you know, all of us are going to have different opinions on this board, and none of us are wrong. You know, Mark and I have talked a number of times and kept on saying to each other, none of this is, there's not a clear right or wrong answer to anything that we're talking about here, it's just how we personally feel how things are going. And it's honestly, it's difficult for me to say like, hey, I want to get these kids back into school, when we take a look at the number and it's 62. Look, I get that, I just feel for these kids that, you know, are struggling mentally, they're struggling, you know, even trying to look at a day of school, of paying attention and all kinds of things going on here. So I think this long-term approach, I can't voice enough how much I'm concerned about the mental health of our students moving forward here. So it's my little bit there.
I have a question, Rob. Do you know, do we have any microgroups of students that are coming in, like special needs students? Can you talk a little bit about that? Because I guess I haven't heard that side of it. I'm interested to hear a little bit about the students that are coming into school at the moment.
We do have some small groups of students working with specific staff members in buildings based on IEP and other specific needs. Interestingly, we did have some families opt to remain virtual only who would have been provided services in person, given their support for the state of the pandemic. But we do have small populations of kids in all of our buildings coming and going based on servicing model needs.
Thank you.
I guess I'll go now. I definitely agree with Corey. You know, the stuff that we've been hearing about, whether people just want them to be back or, you know, they're pointing at different statistics and studies, I mean, we're all well aware of a lot of these things, and I, you know, I do agree that, you know, mental health is becoming a bigger problem, going back even, you know, last year. My biggest concern is that, you know, I would be hesitant to deviate from public health officials' recommendations, and if I were to support us to change what we use to decide whether we're all virtual or not, I don't think I could support it at the current state we're in. And the problem is that, you know, people point to the one metric, which is an indicator of kind of the overall metrics, really. I mean, if you want to look at all the graphs and all the tables, it's, you know, I wouldn't use the word exponential, but that would be the next word I would use, both in our town and in our state. You know, it's not getting better right now, it's getting dramatically worse, and I don't know if putting all the kids back in school would impact that or not, I honestly do not know, but right now, we're trending in a bad direction. So if I was to reluctantly get behind a change to what we're using, it would have to be based on us either seeing a stabilization of cases or a trend downward. If we were just kind of bouncing between 25 and 30, and everybody was getting kind of crabby, I'd be like, all right, let's go. But this is beyond that, so I just don't see how, and again, I'm trying to be considerate of everybody's opinions, but, you know, I know that the kids are struggling and parents are struggling with work and stuff, but, you know, this is, seems like a really bad time to go back, and I wish it wasn't true, but I would personally want to wait and hopefully see this stabilize a little bit. I don't know how long that's going to be, is the problem, so that's my opinion right now.
Last month, last meeting, and this is not necessarily significantly relevant, but I knew one person who had COVID or who had tested positive, nine over a dozen. So I think exponential is not necessarily hyperbole, because that is an exponential rise. That's not even taking into account the people who have been exposed directly to people who have tested positive. Thankfully, all those people are seemingly well or have, you know, are just sick, they're not hospitalized or on a ventilator or anything, but it is hard for me to look at all, I can look at one metric and then probably make a very clear decision, because that's easy, of one metric. But when you look at all of the metrics available, even that have been suggested through by the community, they don't point to a real clear line to opening up anything, let alone, I mean, not just schools, but just anything. It's like, we really need to like, you know, I mean, yeah, it's gotten out of control. And I am in not consistent, but relatively consistent contact with Marie Weisman at the Fort Healthcare, at Fort Healthcare. She has overseen quite a bit of the COVID triage, if you will. I do know that the hospital is building new negative pressure rooms for patients. They have seen sicker patients, they've seen more patients, and the patients that they do admit are sicker. So those are data that are here, it's Fort data, you know, that's not what's going on in Johnson Creek, and it's not what's going on in Jefferson or anything, that's here. There isn't like a, they don't have any kind of like a projection that this is getting better, and people are starting to consider, you know, what do we do about Thanksgiving? How do we, you know, how are holidays going to look? You know, I mean, I'm sure we're all kind of thinking about that. I personally have parents that are over 80 years old, so I will not be seeing them for these, I haven't seen them for quite a while now. And that isn't, that's based solely on the fact that where we live right now is a national, like my parents called me to joke around, which they, you know, they thought it was a, what's going on up there? But the truth is, the national media, you know, all the way to the West Coast and the East Coast, people want to know why we are seeing so much, such a pervasive, you know, disease. I mean, it's crawling all over the place right now in the Midwest, and I think that that's kind of indicative of how things typically happen out here, you know. Skinny jeans were cool in New York in probably like 2001, and we finally got them in 2012. So, I mean, it just takes a long time for things to kind of cruise across the country, and, you know, we're seeing that here. I think we're seeing what was considered the first wave in New York, they're now seeing a second or even a third wave, we're seeing that first wave. I want my kids in school, I want all the kids that I see around town, I want them out doing stuff, I want them to be able to play sports, I want all this stuff, but being a governing body that is responsible for, how many students exactly, roughly?
About 2,700.
2,700. So do we have any buildings with less than 150 students in them? Okay.
As I'm recalling my presentation, I did leave out that even if we were open in person, our high school would currently be closed, and it would have been the second occasion it would have been closed, given the positive cases, and we would have an elementary school that would have been closed recently as well, which is neither here nor there, but just to give you an indication of, you know, even if cases were just what they are now, which I think are underreported, we would currently be closed at the high school for the second time.
So really where I was going with that is, you know, people have asked me, why are some of the parochial schools open? Well, they have 134 students in their entire, you know, body of students. That's way easier to manage, physical distancing, contact tracing, all the stuff that needs to be done, and so the risks seem to be a little bit different for a smaller institution with a bit, it's a bit in some ways more nimble. But the fact is, is that everybody, all students in Wisconsin right now are losing out because whether or not we're in person or not, there's some administrator, there's some teacher, there's some, you know, administrative person that's dealing with COVID, contact tracing, all of this COVID response stuff, and not able to do what their job used to be, which probably used to be teaching and learning, or some, you know, some conduit of that. So it's, yeah, I don't really have much, I don't have anything new to say other than, you know, I wish I could say that we're looking at trends and we're looking at things that say we will be able to be open sooner than we expect, which is halfway through November, if possibly, 50%. But that's, I mean, we're looking at, that's what we're looking at, it's the reality.
It's hard stuff.
It is, it's hard stuff.
Very difficult. I've spent a lot of time over the last few weeks checking the Jefferson County website every day, 2:00 PM, as I'm sure many of you are. And I do want to say thank you to Jefferson County Health Department for opening up and having a lot more COVID testing dates. Just so the public's aware, every Friday from 10:00 to 6:00, and Saturday from 8:00 to 1:00, you can actually go through the drive-in and get tested, which we didn't have a couple months ago. It was, you had to drive pretty far away. With that, I think it'll be helpful where we have people, the ability to have access to get tested, to know if they're positive, to quarantine sooner, and hopefully reduce those rates. I think that makes a big difference. I personally feel that it's really important that, as a district, that we're focused on educating students, and we educate kids on science. I have a really hard time turning away from an epidemiologist who is giving us very hard facts of there's a high community spread after you're hitting 25, the 25 new positive case per day through the seven-day rate. I have a hard time ignoring that. Perhaps there's something we can do to continue to help mental health for kids. I think we've got some, you know, sports options on the table tonight, I think that could be helpful. I think we have an awesome staff that pays attention, and we have parents that are reaching out when they need to, when they see something in their kids' lives. I just personally feel like I can't turn away from those metrics, and, you know, nobody's wrong, nobody's probably 100% right in this, it's a difficult decision, but it's something that, you know, we're not taking lightly. I know we're all trying to think of new ways, and I know that Dr. Abbott has spent a great deal of time, along with his administrative staff, to reach out and try to come up with new things, you know, obviously, the schedules that we'll be talking about soon is, we're going to try this and see how this works. We got through quarter one, and clearly we saw that there's some adjustments to make, new things to try, and I think that's amazing, and I think it shows all the work that our teachers, our support staff are putting in, and, you know, and the admin team too. But I guess that's just, that's how I feel about it. I do like that in this kind of proposed metric, we're also taking into consideration and really laying it out for the community that there are other things that we're looking at. We're looking at staff absences and, you know, other items that kind of are really focused on our school district. So, yeah, that's kind of how I'm feeling right now, and I just, like I said, I hesitate to kind of turn away from, you know, the things that we've at least started to put into place, especially given how the numbers have increased over the last few weeks. I'm definitely open to considering things as we start to trend downward to making adjustments as well.
That's what I like the most about this, the proposal that Dr. Abbott has been working on and proposed tonight, is that we're looking at downward trends. I think that's good grief, I hope that, you know, we can, that's a really, it's a very feasible, reasonable thing to look for and see, it's also a feasible and reasonable thing to achieve, and I like this kind of fluid area between 20 and 30 as opposed to it being a rigid, you know, 25%, and then everyone's just like waiting with bated breath for that threshold.
In all transparency, I mean, I know I've shared with board members, but it was probably two weeks ago, I think we had three days in a row where things were headed down, and I had admin meetings set up for that following Monday morning where we were talking about coming back to you with trends are going down, what can we do in between? I mean, so, you know, that's part of what we're trying to capture and what we're sharing with you this evening, is that magic numbers, yes, but it's more about the trend, and if we can get things headed downward, that may provide doors to be at least cracked open that are seemingly closed at this point in time, given the current metrics and understanding of them, so it's not out of the question.
Mrs. Reynolds, do you have anything you'd like to say? Okay, because you can just shout over me, too.
Oh, no, I like to wait, it's all right.
Don't wait, because then I feel like I have to spill the space. I'm nervous talking.
Well, I've had a lot of, a lot of things to consider, a lot of things happened. Lot of, a lot of things have happened so far, and the biggest thing is, I honestly feel that we, kids need to be in school. I don't, after all of this time looking over the Jefferson County metrics, I honestly, I don't feel we should follow them anymore. The safety precautions, yes, I mean, we should always have safety precautions, that's not that, but I don't think if we follow them, we are not going to get back into school until maybe next year. I can't, no. I won't do that to all of these kids, I won't do that to the parents. I can't, no. I, I won't do that to all of these kids. I won't do that to the parents or the staff. No. It is, it's taken me a lot to come to that. I don't do that very lightly, but our kids need to be in school. The mental health of them, I see. And I've, I hear, I know. Even if they do go back for, let's say, three days and then have to go back to virtual, those three days are golden. Those three days will help those kids immensely right now. They have been sheltered. They have been tucked away. And all of us are out here. All of us are going to the grocery store. All of us are, yes, some are getting sick. Absolutely. But we are still going. We are still working. Some of us have been working the entire time in person with safety precautions, and we're still okay. It's for our kids to be able to hit, you know, any of the A C T numbers that we need to do. They need to have their whole being able to hit them. You can't just have a kid sit down for weeks on end, sitting in front of a computer. No, that's not going to help them hit that number. What's going to help them hit that number is everything else. And right now, they don't get all of that. I know for certain my kids don't. I know my kids are just like a lot of other kids. There's I E Ps. My kids are suffering. I know other kids are suffering too. Yes. Can they, you know, type out some things on a screen? Of course they can. We all can do that. But it's the rest of them that is not getting what it needs. They are not getting what they need. And I honestly think it is unfair that we're here and our kids are at home. They can do what they need to do to grow. They can adapt. They can wear masks. Masks do work. We've seen that at the hospital. We can go in and treat a COVID patient and come out and not be infected ourselves. That has been proven this entire time. We can do this. Our kids can do this. The parents can do this. We need to get them back into school. They need to have all of the learning, not just what's on a book, what's on a screen. When they step into a school, it's not just, okay, their math scores are going to go up. No, it's more about the whole person. It's the whole child. Everything about him, getting a proper meal for some of them is ginormous. If they can get that and if they feel safe, they're going to do whatever they need to do to stay that way, to get that. So, I honestly think we need to get them back. We need to get them back sooner rather than later. I don't want to wait till the end of November, which gets pushed back till December, which will get pushed back till next year. No, I don't want to do that. That is not fair to our kids. It's not fair to any of them. Yes, is it going to be scary? Of course. Everything now is scary. Everything. But we can't let that stop us. We can't let that hinder us. We have to push through that scariness and come out the other side. Do we need to, you know, maybe change a few things here and there? Absolutely. But we still need, they need to get back to school. They need to do it sooner rather than later. So, I think we should figure out something else. I don't think we should follow the metrics at the Jefferson County because if we do that, they're not going back. We could just call it for the year. Maybe even most of next year. Are we going to wait till vaccine comes out where everybody can get it? Five years? No, I'm not waiting for my kids to go back to school for that. I'm not going to wait that long. I don't want other parents to wait that long either. We need to figure it out. We need to figure it out now to get them back now.
Would I, would I kind of look back at, you know, all the past, we've kind of taken over the last, you know, two, three, four, five months, and, you know, we had a presentation, you know, Dr. Abbott was presenting on, you know, the, the plan for what, what the school year looked like. And at, at that point, I think we could all agree that that the mitigation plan of making sure that our kids and staff and, you know, everybody was safe. We all, we all trusted that that was going to be a way that was going to keep us in school for a long time. And I, I deeply still do trust that that mitigation plan is going to help us maintain our, maintain our healthiness. And I'm also becoming more and more concerned about, you know, is it, you know, we just heard, you know, we have seventy two households that can't be, that can't get high speed internet. Like, what are, what are those kids doing? Right? I, I don't know how many kids it actually represents. It's here nor there. I could probably get to a pretty, pretty easy number, maybe, maybe a hundred kids or so. I don't know what that looks like, right? But like, I, I become more and more concerned as a board if we sit here and we say, okay, we're, we're going to be virtual until the next board meeting. I just looked up, it's November nineteenth. What, what are we doing between now and then to make sure that, like, we're, we're educating our students to the best of our ability and providing, providing them, like, you know, making sure they're achieving his or her academic potential, right? I, I, I am deeply, deeply concerned if we sit here and we say that we're still going to be virtual for the next three or four weeks. Yeah, I, I worry. I worry for us. I, I really do. And I, I think all of us share that same feeling, right? Whether it's, you know, you know, some more than others, there's, there's certainly without, without that, but I, I just don't think we, we're, we're doing our students just, we, if we walk out of here today and we don't have a plan to get them at least, or, or at least to step forward in that direction, giving, giving them in person. I, I really, really struggle when I go home and tell my kids and, and, and tell people close, and they're like, hey, look, you know, maybe next board meeting we'll have a plan put together. I just don't think that's going to get it done, and we're selling ourselves short. I, I believe that, that our administrative team has put together a really, really good plan, mitigation plan of wearing masks. Like, like Amy said, the face masks work, right? And, and I'm certain, without speaking out of turn here, Dr. Abbott, like, I, I'm assuming that there's been additional measures put in place to, to maybe we saw some gaps in our mitigation plan previously that, that we've kind of nipped in the bud a little bit. Is that, is that accurate at all?
Well, in the time we were in person, sure. I mean, we were pivoting all the time. I think part of what you saw in my presentation, particularly at the middle school and high school, is a reaction to additional physical distancing, just given the scale of students, and also our inability to get permit decent use of the tenting that we had up. The fire department was impossible to allow us to use some of those extra spaces. So, I mean, part of that is primarily in order to have fewer kids in the building at any one time. I mean, the other piece of that is, and we've witnessed it ourselves, with contact tracing and positive cases rippling through those larger populations rather quickly. And also, I mean, regardless of specific metrics, I mean, just by the developmental age of students, and those populations are different than elementary school age kids. So, that is a response to that, yes.
Yeah. So, I just, you know, as I sit here today, I just like, I, 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 I struggle with this. I've talked to Mark a number of times. We've had long conversations. Like, I, I, I simply struggle. If I, if I leave here today and we, we're not anywhere close or other than saying, well, we're going to wait till next board meeting and see what happens. I, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that's going to feel good. I, I just can't say that it is. You know, I've mentioned that the, the social emotional stuff, like, all, all this stuff is, is, you know, many years ago, I used to believe that the school district here is simply just to educate the children. And, and as I'm learning that, it's far from everything that we do. And if we sit here today and, and believe in our, in our, in our heart and our soul that, that we're providing just education here is completely wrong. We, we need to get these kids. We need to get these kids back in school or have a plan in place to get them back into school. Again, nobody, nobody's wrong in what they're thinking, but we need to have a plan here. I find it very difficult if we leave here without a plan. It's, it's not putting, not putting our kids in the right direction here.
I guess I'm struggling to understand what the plan is then because no one here is saying they don't want the kids in school. And I, I'm, I'm just saying that.
Thank you.
I mean, but I, I don't think a comparison between a, you know, what's happening in a business or in a hospital is a good one to what's happening in schools with just who's there, what's going on, you know.
Hospital, for example, is set up to be a very sterile environment, highly trained people, you know, less dense. I mean, I, I get the, you know, what you're trying to convey there, but I want, you know, I mean, I, I'm not going to, I don't know what the plan would be to deviate from where we are, other than just to say, screw it, we're going back. And I, and that's, if that's an opinion, then that's fine, but I can't, I can't do that because as much as I want the kids back and I agree with all, you know, I don't know where this is going, how long it's going to take. This is probably the worst time to put the kids back in school. Like, we should have just been in all spring now that we look back and see what our numbers in, in the county were. Like, it's getting worse. So, either we decide to, you know, try to keep doing the best we can, or we just say, let's, let's put them all back and see what happens. And I'm more worried about that from a community standpoint. Yeah, it gets the kids back in. They, they need to be in school. It's better for their mental health, but we could be making a very bad decision about the health of our community if, if that is what we decide to do. And I, I don't want to sit here and say, like, let's do nothing and, you know, everybody's going to point at us and say, you guys didn't get our kids back in school. I, I feel like doing nothing with respect to changing our, our current course, it's not doing nothing. I think it's making a wise decision. Not to say we can't meet in a, in a day or two weeks or a month or whenever we need to to change, but this doesn't have to be a, a board meeting by board meeting thing, but I don't, I think we're going to see some really bad stuff happen pretty soon, just because it's getting colder, cold and flu season. It, it sucks, but it, maybe it isn't going to be till spring. I don't know. But I, I feel like it's a bad time to put all the kids back in school, as much as I would love to say do it. So, I, unless somebody's got a really wild idea of what we can do to change things here, other than just to say disregard our, our guidance, I, I can't get behind it. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Let me interject real quick. Uh, Corey, I'm sorry, but I, I think we do have a plan, sort of, a, a, a new plan, sort of, too. It's, instead of looking for this one number, this magic number, we're looking for a trend. So, you know, if we see a trend, I like the idea that if we see a trend of people, less people being positive when tested and less people being hospitalized and the hospital having less patients. And also the hospital having, and other businesses in the area having less problems staffing their businesses due to COVID, because that is also an issue at the hospital. I know that there are a number of nurses who've had to not be at work because they have been exposed either in the community or have had a, a child or a significant related family member be exposed or sick with COVID. So, I, I just kind of wanted to throw out that I think that there is a plan. It's not, you know, and I really wish this could just go from board meeting to board meeting, because I would love to not think about this for thirty seconds. But it goes from the minute we are done here till the, until it's over for, for, for me, and I'm sure it is for you guys. I mean, it is, I talk, I don't talk about anything else in the community. It is all, all I talk about, all I think about.
Yeah. We're all in the same boat, right?
Yeah, you know, um, so I, I just wanted to kind of butt in there and say that I think that we do, we are kind of wiggling our plan to, our, our, we're kind of crafting our plan to a little bit more of a reasonable or what we see as a reasonable way to maybe expedite getting kids back. I mean, I think that's kind of the goal, is to kind of not to subvert science, but to use science and not the knowledge that we have of our local community to help us make that decision better. That's just my, my, my opinion on it.
Yeah.
I guess I'm also thinking about, you know, something that, you know, Mrs. Reynolds said with, you know, having protective gear in hospitals and, you know, they've got, you know, P P E that we just couldn't even offer to our staff, you know, for, for dealing with, with patients. And we have teachers that have twenty to twenty four kids in a classroom. It's a pretty small classroom. You know, just trying to think of ideas to explore, you know, if it is something that's a split schedule where you have less kids in. You know, I know we've gone down that road and just trying to kind of figure out ways to split it that way. You know, I don't know if that's something we want to look into exploring more where we are limiting. But I still personally want to see those trends go down before we're considering putting kids back in. And I get it. I too would like to have my kid back in school a hundred percent. But it's just, that's not, I think, where we need to be right now. I think we do need to focus on, you know, following what some of the guidance is that's given to us and maybe trying to figure out some ways to help. But I just, I'm very hesitant to, again, move away from, you know, what we've been looking at. It's, the trend is just not good right now. I don't know what the numbers are for Ford Atkinson and Jefferson today. But I, I guess I'm curious, Dr. Abbott, where do, where's our further student coming from that's kind of open enrolled into our district? Do I want to know? I'm going to put you on the spot now.
Yeah, wow. I wasn't expecting that, if I'm correct. I mean, obviously in a drivable distance, I mean, twenty, twenty-five miles probably.
Right. So, you know, I know that, I know that we want to focus on just Ford Atkinson, but we also have teachers, staff members that also drive from outside cities that live out of town, putting, you know, kids back in the classroom. You know, we had the situation where one person got several classrooms shut down for a period of time. Bringing them back now, I mean, do we really, as an employer, also want to put our staff at risk when we know that we have these issues? And we're seeing these trends. I just feel like it's putting us also in a legal predicament that I, I just can't ignore with my professional background.
If we were to adopt a different metric, what would we use, I guess?
I, I mean, I, I think like the internal dashboard that we use, I know, I know it can only be updated once, uh, once a week or whatever. But, you know, if, if we had to go away from that, I, I think using something, our internal dashboard and the, the three positives in a, in a building, I, I think what I've seen seems the most logical.
Yeah. And then if not, so if one school has to go virtual, not having all of them. Because that's, to me, that would be, that would be better than having everybody do everything the same.
But I mean, the dashboard right now is behind, right? Like, it's, number one, it's self-reported. So, we're counting on our students and staff to actually self-report. And when we are getting notified from the county, it's very delayed. I think Dr. Abbott said it was eleven days, sometimes more after an actual COVID diagnosis that you're being alerted. I, I just, I worry that that's not enough. I, I would definitely feel differently if we were getting real time data from the county, and maybe that's something that we could push for.
That's not going to happen. I'm sorry. But that is honestly, that, that data is not going to happen. Why? But that is honestly, that, that data is not gonna happen. Why? Because they were not equipped to deal with a pandemic of this size for this long. They're not gonna be able to have the data instantly, like we would all love to have. Where they're not gonna have it.
Yeah, and I think that's why, I mean, no one's getting anything in real time, but I'm just, I keep looking at, at the, at the charts, and these aren't fake numbers, they're just delayed. And this is, this is, it's going in a real, it's going straight up. I mean, like, what I worry about is that, I thought about, it would be cool just to start, you know, opening up and like, some kids get a few weeks here, some kids get a few days here. Eventually, they're all gonna probably get closed down for periods, maybe open back up. I mean, there are, there are benefits to that, I think, because we, you know, the kids get some time in school, but if we're, we're just kind of assuming that based on what we're seeing, the schools are gonna get shut back down again, is the benefit of being open for a limited amount of time worth the risk of more people getting sick? You know, it, there's no right answer to that question, but I, I think even if we were to disregard metrics and guidance based on the, I don't think we're gonna deviate from the kind of, uh, tracking and tracing and, and case, you know, if you get X cases at a, at a school, I don't think anybody's entertaining, you know, dispensing with that. We're just gonna be unfortunately in kind of the same predicament, but with more uncertainty day to day about where people are going, work, teachers, are they in the building or are they at home? You know, I, I think there's benefits from getting the kids back regardless of what's going on in the world right now, but we're, we're also introducing a lot more problems that we're not anticipating with logistics and staffing. I mean, look, look at all the districts that decided to stay open that had to shut down because they have nobody to work there. You know, they don't have enough people to work there. So, let's say we, we lose part of our staff or our, our support staff or teachers, then are we just shutting back down? Or are we telling half the kids they can't come because there's half the teachers there? I mean, there's, there's a number of, we're gonna try to solve one problem, we're gonna get ten more is, is what I'm saying, and I just don't see, I, I just don't see right now being the time to, to put everybody back. I wish, I, I wish I could get behind you guys, because I, I do agree with you that this sucks. I just, I can't, I can't, I, I, I wouldn't vote to put them back in school until I see something resembling a leveling off of these cases in our county and in our city.
Do, do you, do you like have a particular, like, like a number we get to and kind of stabilize from there?
The lie thing is no number. It could be, it could be a hundred per hundred thousand, but right now it's like this. And until it starts to go like that, it's gonna get worse. And I, I, you know, we're either just gonna decide, we're gonna, we're gonna all live with this, and hopefully not a lot of us die from it. Or we're, or we're gonna keep doing what we're doing, which seems kind of crappy, but I feel like it's in everybody's best interest, unfortunately. If, if I thought that things were at least stable, I, I would probably have a different opinion, but the, it just looks really bad. I mean, and I know, like Mark said, I, I know people who have almost died. I know people with family members who have died. I have people at my work that, that have gotten it. I've, you know, and this is all local. It's not a flu. It's, it's not the flu.
Two hundred, two hundred thousand or two hundred fifty thousand more people.
I don't wanna sit here and debate science, you know, and, and opinions about how good or bad things are, but I, I cannot with a clear conscience put not just, I mean, that's not just kids going back whose parents are cool with it, it's our staff. And you could say, well, if they don't wanna work here, they can go find a new job. Well, that's not gonna happen.
We don't want that.
I mean, that's the same as, if they don't wanna, they don't.
Because we don't have, there's nobody knocking down our door to come teach. We're gonna have issues with subs. We had them going back before this all happened. All, all the retired teachers I know that were subs last year are like, forget that, I'm staying home. You know, I, I just think that as much as we really want the kids back, for all the right reasons, this is, this is not the right time to do it.
Couple things. First of all, if we look at the beginning of the exponential rise in the trend of COVID, let's just take out the whole, like, mortality rate, but just people testing positive with it. It increased, it started increasing September second. What happened September second in Wisconsin?
Football season.
And schools started opening. I'm not gonna say that I have some kind of, uh, direct line that can, that can connect those two, but I, looking at all these charts and right around the beginning of September, things start to go whoop, as far as like infection rates and hospitalization rates and people getting sicker. Okay, so there is some correlation, maybe not a causation there, but there is some correlation that when you open up facilities where people are within, you know, six feet of each other for longer than fifteen minutes at a time, maybe you'll see an increase in rise. So I think if we, if we do go back and, to face to, face to face, then we are just kind of agreeing that that's what we're, we're willing to, to risk. We're willing to risk our, um, data that we're looking at and us, our literal data here in our dashboard to reflect the county dashboard. So I think that's something we first need to think about. And so we need to think about like the teachers and the students increasingly getting very likely, um, getting sicker and getting more, and more of them getting sick. The other thing I'd like to say is that I don't think anybody here makes any of these decisions with mental health being anything other than the first component of our decision-making. I find it, uh, to be completely ludicrous to think that a student is gonna come to school even in the best conditions and learn if that their mental health isn't the first thing we're taking care of. And I, since I've been on this board, I have discussed that, even when I was a brand newbie. And I think that it's, uh, I, I think that everybody here, genuinely, I've, I've had this conversation with all of you, I think you all care about the mental health of our students first and foremost. Then comes academic health, and then the others. But I don't think that we can, I don't think that it's fair for people to say that because we advocate for one thing or another, that we disregard uh, mental health, because, um, I personally don't disregard mental health ever. Whenever I talk to anybody or do anything, the first thing I'm doing is assessing what, what, what kind of mental health is this person in right now in this moment? And I think about, I stay up at night thinking about the kids that, like the kids that I worked with who are completely off the grid now um, because of virtual schooling. And I think about my own children and how they're dueling, doing, and I have one who is thriving and one who isn't. And I think about your, your kids and your kids, you know, I, I think we all think about the mental health, and I think it's, it's, it's not consuming most of my brain, it's consuming, uh, uh, quite a bit to the point where it, it makes me sad to think about how much we aren't focusing on getting the kids educated and getting, and getting services that we can tailor to this pandemic. We are going to be in this pandemic. And we're spending so much time contact tracing and, and all of these other things that we should be just brainstorming on ways to get around this and, and deliver our product safely and effectively. And in doing so, catering to or improving, or at least recognizing the mental health of our students. It, it, it's, I, I just really feel like, you know, we, we sometime, it sometimes gets cast that, oh, mental health is not a concern for you because you think this way or you think that way about face-to-face learning. This is not about, for any of us, and I can, I'm, I'm pretty confident speaking for the board on this. I think we all keep that at the forefront of our decision-making, because we think we all, we all have experienced either mental health issues or people with mental health issues. And so I think that is a, that's, um, misattributed to decisions that we make. So I just wanted to clarify that. First thing I wanted to clarify though was that, that you can look at these charts, whether you're looking at the DHS, or whether you're looking at our internal, or whether you're looking at the county, or whether you're looking at the national infection rates, and they increase beginning in the beginning of September. And locally, they, they increased quite a bit, I think something like thirty percent, which is a pretty big fold for this town. I think the, I think everybody made great points here. I think this is, um, this is a conversation that you and I, I'm happy to have it with you for six hours a day. I know you've got stuff to do, but I don't have a job right now.
Be careful, yeah, I may hold you to that.
Well, I don't have a job, so I, all I'm doing is watching my kids right now and, uh, dealing with this stuff, so. But I don't think anything we do is set in stone. But I do think that right now, making the best decision in a crappy situation is what we're faced with, and I, you know, I'm beyond getting emotional about it, because it's, I, I, I've, I've lost it, you know, and I'm, our kids are, the mental health of our kids is already affected. We, we can't prevent that anymore. It's already happened. Now we have to like consider the fact that, say, we, uh, we do go face to face and we have numbers like this, are kids gonna feel safe coming to school? I mean, we have to think about that, because we have kids with, you know, high anxiety about this. I mean, I have one, you know? My kid wears a mask under his mask. You know, he wears a mask everywhere he goes. So, I think we should kind of try to draw this together here, uh, so that we can, uh, get some of these fine people back to their families. But really what we're, we're, we're hearing is we should, uh, the metrics, there, we, we should, should we, do we wanna entertain a motion on, uh, adopting new metrics? Is that something we'd like to entertain a motion on?
What metrics?
That's, yeah, that's the other thing. I mean, we have to have some.
No matter what numbers we start looking at, none of them are gonna be good, period. We are living in a pandemic. And let me specify, we are living in a pandemic. It's not gonna go away. It may taper off. It could come back. That's, that's the world we're living in right now. Before, we were worried about other stuff. Now we're worried about a virus. Five years down the road, what are we gonna worry about? Something else. But we need to move with that. We need to live with that. We need to be okay with, yeah, our kids can come out of the house. They're gonna be resilient. Yes, some of them are gonna get sick. But that's okay. Not that it's okay for them to get sick, but it's okay for us to move forward. We cannot be sitting here stuck, looking at numbers that are never going to look good. If we sit here and go on all of these different metrics, we can adopt twenty-five different new ones. They're not gonna look good. What is gonna look good is getting our kids in person. So their mental health and all their other health is going to be better. Yes, is it gonna waver? Are we gonna have to shut down? Absolutely. Are we gonna be back open? Absolutely. But we need to do that. We cannot wait for another month. How many kids are we gonna lose in that month? And I'm not just saying, you know, from school. I'm saying from life. We've already had that happen. I am not willing to take that chance to have that happen again.
I think when we start discussing metrics, it's, like, right now it gets a little gray.
Yeah, no, I agree. That's actually a really good point there, Mrs. Reynolds, that we, yeah, we look at these metrics. I mean, but we do, we, we are a, a governing body that's literally governed by metrics. I mean, that's what we do. We grade, you know, we, we project and we, we are graded. And I mean, so it's kind of hard for us to like divorce ourselves from that, but I think that's, I think there's, there's a fair point to be made there, that if we look at these things, uh, will we, will they ever get better? Maybe, maybe not. I mean, I don't know. I'm not as definitive as you are necessarily on them not ever getting better, because I would like to think that people out there who are watching and people in this room are doing what they can, I mean, to avoid spreading it, but, but, um, you know, I, I would take some, um, qualms with the, their, their health will get better, because I, I have a feeling that if we're shutting down, that people's health by and large isn't getting better. That's, that's my opinion. I'm, I'm not saying that it's right or wrong. I'm just saying that if we're bringing people back in, you know, en masse, that we're gonna be infecting more people. Like, that's my, my personal belief. But I, I think, I think you'd be good points there with those two things. So obviously then we're not gonna entertain a motion to adopt new metrics. Wha- what do we wanna, what do we want to, uh, entertain?
Can we jump in just for a second about, uh, the alternate day schedule? I mean, that's, you're basically talking about trying to limit the amount of bodies in the schools when we get back in person, correct? Number two on the list?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, that was.
I, I think that's.
I mean, I think that's a good, I think that's a good, if and when we go back, I, I do agree, that's probably a good thing to start with.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'll allow a bit of, you know, more distancing and stuff like that. I guess, we're obviously a, a kind of an impasse here, and I, 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 I don't have any motion to make, honestly, right now. I mean, other than us to keep talking and, and rejoin whenever we think it's necessary, but unless there's another motion to be made, I, I got nothing.
I think it's important that the community understands that, um, we're having this conversation civilly, um, that they all can too. Nobody here knows what to do. That's why we're a governing board and we get to collaborate and have this discussion. And I, I really do greatly appreciate your candor and your telling us how you really feel, and Corey telling us how you feel, and AP and Rachel telling us how you feel, and, you know, I, I've had some of the best conversations with the community despite this COVID. It's been, I've, I've, you know, gained new acquaintances and friends, but I, I don't, I don't know that we have really a new, anything to adopt necessarily, but we do have, I think the beginnings of a pretty, um, heavy discussion and, and I think, um, a good discussion. I think everybody here is coming into where they, where they stand. And there, the in-person option is obviously our goal. Um, I will always have some kind of, um, concerns with the physical distancing, because in my great epiphany, I thought grocery stores have been open, hospitals have been open, let's do it. So I started talking to some, I talked to Dr. Abbott, I talked to some other soups in, um, that I'm friends with, and there is no, there's no, uh, line of, of equality between a grocery store and a school. They're just, as much as I thought it was like brilliant, like, these people have been doing this for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week since, you know, the first, you know, droplet of COVID arrived on shores here, and they're still doing it, but there just isn't a, and I spoke with some people at Festival Today specifically about this, like, how do you guys do it? And the fact is, is they aren't, that there are people getting sick there. They just, you know, have a retail, like, supply of, you know, people to just draw from when people are sick, but it spreads there just like everywhere else. The hospital's feeling a crunch, I know, in some of their staffing areas. So personally, I think it'd be just like a kind of an irresponsible message to just, to just go back now, but I do totally, I recognize and understand, and I don't disagree with your passion about getting people back and like getting rid of this whole metric idea. And I, I agree that it would be great if we had some kind of alternative, and I think that we're gonna, the community will encourage us and we will, you know, have to have this conversation more frequently than every board meeting. I know I'm gonna probably have it tomorrow morning, probably around nine forty, before I probably get my first phone call, but.
But I think this is what boards have grappled with, is the idea if you're not going to take the guidance from public health, then what metrics is the right question? And, and that's why I think more, you know, boards who have, have opted not to, to take guidance have rejected metrics and have worked to, I mean, working with positivity rates in individual school buildings. So, I, I'm not sure there is something in between, because if you're not taking guidance, anything is arbitrary.
Yeah.
So it's like, I like the number four, so, which is not making light as much as if it's not something that is based on, you know, guidance from someone else, then whatever is developed internally is arbitrary. It's, it's a number that is picked from somewhere. Which I think is why boards who have moved in a different direction have gone purely to positive case rates in individual buildings. Which, by the way, then becomes a discussion point when you start enacting that as to, well, why is that number three? Why isn't that number seven? And so, you know, the- And so, you know, that, that will be the next discussion point at some point when that's what, you know, districts decide to do at some point.
Yeah, and at what point when you do that?
Doesn't make it wrong. It just is a reality of the situation right now.
But then at the point where you do that, then where do you, I mean, how long is it till someone has a problem with the privacy issues? You know, like there's a shame being diagnosed with COVID. There is a shame there. And if you're diagnosed with COVID and you're pariahed out in your building.
There, there are issues in other districts with a sense of whether or not students and families are, are reporting or are doing the quarantine when asked and those types of things as well. And perhaps that would never be an issue here in Fort Atkinson. I just know in, in reading, I'm sure much of what other people are reading, particularly, I saw a couple of things come out of the Fox Valley where that's, you know, a, a really big issue for them right now. And, you know, one unknown positive that was not shared can, can rip through contact tracing very, very quickly. So there's that piece as well.
I just know personally, having had to have a test and my kid had a soccer game be canceled because my test didn't come back positive or negative. It felt like crap and I knew, the parents knew, who, who was the, who was the sick guy because I was sick. So, I mean, to me, it's when we start getting down to individual buildings, like when does somebody feel that they have been? Or when does somebody feel like, I don't want to report because I'm?
The third.
I'm ashamed, or I'm afraid, or I don't want, the wrestling meet to be canceled, or, you know, it's like, I don't either. But I also don't want to be the super spreader event, you know? So I think what we should do is maintain what we have now with the exception of, can we adopt the new suggested?
I don't know that you need to take particular action on the alternating day schedule. I, I just wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to discuss it if need be.
I personally think anything that can expedite getting kids in the school and, and could provide with social dis, or physical distancing is where we should be, you know, working, working towards. But we, we do need to talk about sports, correct?
But also the, the additional early release time is something that I, I would prefer a board action on if that's something you're supporting.
Yeah, okay.
And just as a, it just as a review now, this time later in the evening, we'd be looking at an additional early release day every Monday, beginning at 1:30 in the afternoon through quarter two during the weeks that we are in person. And if we do get it to be in a position where we have some schools open and some schools not, then I guess we'll have to navigate that as we go. I, I didn't want to put too many if thens into this notion. As much as anything is to let families know if this was the case forward, that, that that's something we were going to be activating.
Thank you very much for the clarification there. So we will go ahead and, and open the, just, I guess, do we, do we want to have discussion about the prep time?
I think it's a good idea. If they need it, they need it.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, so we've had our discussion there, everybody. So can we go ahead and move? Can we move to give our teachers some more prep time, please? Or to consider it?
I'll move to give teachers more prep time. It'll start on Mondays in person, 1:30 PM through the end of quarter two, when we're doing in-person learning.
All right, we'll second. A motion by Mrs. Sneeden, a second by Mr. Nickram, and is, that is a voice vote. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed?
Can I, not to go back to item one, but, so just though, from, from the chair, I said it. So what I'm hearing, perhaps just generally, if there, if there isn't a shift away from the current metrics, what I think I'm hearing some consensus around is if we do start seeing a stabilization or downward trend from whatever number we're talking about, that, that the board would entertain other ideas perhaps for small groups or for some sort of in-person in-between that perhaps isn't as robust as to what we're putting forward this evening. But there would be discussion there. And there's obviously no numbers attached to that or anything else. But I think what I'm hearing is like, look, we're going up. If we can get it to start at least trending down, it opens doors for some discussion of, of some sort of hybrid sort of other ideas that we would have percolating around as well.
Yeah.
Well, we have lots of good ideas. But I think that's sort of my, from, again, from my chair, my takeaway is things level off, start heading down, there could be some things we could do in between without getting to where it is that we want to be. Is that fair?
I think that's.
Does that make sense?
Everybody, fair with that?
Winter activities, there was some information shared from the high school. As you saw in the information that was shared, essentially what they would like to do is entertain winter activities as recommended by the, by the WIAA, who has provided a fairly robust and lengthy list of do's and don'ts related to winter activities. So with adopting those, what's happened is the Badger Conference has suspended conference responsibilities or actions this, this season. So districts are able, like we were this fall, to work with other area districts or others to maintain those types of activities. The, in essence, I, I think in a nutshell, the recommendation is that if we are virtual only because of, of the current metrics, if we are virtual only because we have too many staff who are unable to teach, those winter activities could continue. But if we were closed because of high school student positivity rates, those activities would cease at that point. So I, there's obviously more detail there. The WIAA, I think those who are interested have read everything from how you handle a huddle to how you do everything else in between. But in, in essence, that's what the direction the high school is looking for with winter activities. Which admittedly, I think we're all hearing, that it seems counterintuitive to some that we would be in a virtual-only learning environment at this point and still entertain indoor winter activities. And then you have others who are definitely encouraging you to consider that regardless of learning format for some of the reasons that were discussed this evening. So again, it's one of those 50/50 types of thoughts, I think. But I do feel like what they put forward is probably the best take at what the WIAA provided us this recently.
Yeah, I've looked over all this stuff and, I mean, it checks, checks a lot of the boxes. What's saying, board?
So what we're saying is if, is if we're in person during winter sports and the school, like the high school needs to shut down, all winter sports would then cease?
During that time of closure.
During the time of closure. Okay.
What would that time of closure be?
It depends on the scenario. It could be, it could be three days. It could be longer based on when those cases were coming in. It could be minimally, according to the county, is minimally three days. I don't have all of it in a spreadsheet, but districts who have gone that route, I don't know that I've seen any only go for three days because the circumstances are different. It depends on, on when cases are reported and that type of thing. So, so, you know, and I guess to get into the weeds a little bit more, Mr. Nickram, I think there's also the understanding that if, if, if activities are running and there is a sick athlete or activity participant on one team, for instance, the boys' basketball team, that team would cease, but the others would continue.
Would continue.
Right. But if the building were to close due to high spread or high positivity rates, then all activities would close for that period of time.
As, as little as three weeks, or three days?
Yeah, that, the minimum guidance is three days.
Right.
Yeah.
And when do winter sports start?
They, part of the reason, there, I think we've all heard some things, both pros and cons on this, is that they actually had activities sign up today during enrichment time, which was not trying to get ahead of board discussion as much as if they didn't, they wouldn't know who was interested in having activities if they were to be offered this evening. So, so the board did not take formal action on fall sports. But you were obviously all made aware of what the proposal was and how things were in accordance with the WIAA and then some local and conference decisions. And that's sort of where we are now. So I guess my suggestion, if I could, is if, if this is something that you are not supportive of, then I feel like some sort of action probably would be helpful. Or if you have other questions or additional information, we can definitely get that to you as soon as possible so that you could be more informed if you feel that you need to be.
I guess I'll, I, I support basically what they've laid out. I think it's good to get whoever we can to be able to do whatever they can. So I think there, you know, there's risk obviously, but it's significantly less than some of the other things we've been talking about. I guess I'm just, out of curiosity, has anybody looked, WIAA or even our district, looked at the possibility of getting tests for our athletes on a more regular basis? Or is that just something, I know the NBA does it and, you know, major league baseball does it, they got billions of dollars. Is that something that's always feasible?
Well, we did look into building a bubble and that wasn't possible or feasible.
Tried to do it ten times.
Yeah, fair enough. Actually, we tried, we tried three tenths and we couldn't do it. No, I think the short answer is that that has not been a high school application.
I think, but I thought it was worth it.
I think it's a reasonable question.
Yeah, reasonable question. So in the sake of brevity then, do, do we have any board members that are diametrically opposed to what has been submitted to us in board docs and want to motion on winter sports? Otherwise they just go as they, as recommended.
It's proposed. And we have, we have continued discussions, but what you saw today was sort of the outline and then operationalizing that would become next. And definitely the work at the high school today starts showing where our levels of interest are as well, so.
We definitely need to get them playing.
No, I agree. I mean, the skate park has been great. I don't know if anybody here has sent their children to the skate park, but it's, it's outdoors, it's great. The kids are, you know, I, I take my dog for a walk and kind of keep my eyes on them so that they don't see that I'm there. But I can hear them swear if they are. So, I mean, there are, there are things to do, you know, and back to the mental health piece, you know, I, I, it, it used, I have calloused myself because I needed to, to this, but it is, it's paramount to all the decisions that I personally make as a board member and I can probably, it's at least at the forefront of most of our decision-making. But this is part of that, you know, this is what we can offer safely and that we can all agree safely. It can be mitigated and can be kind of controlled more so than having buildings full of people. You know, this is a little bit more elective and there's a little bit more athlete accountability and maybe even some kind of, you know, it's just easier to manage a smaller population. So, so without that, without seeing anything, any opposition, then we'll just go ahead and leave that be.
The next was the discussion or potential action on interior building use for non-district groups as the board and community recalls. I believe in August action or perhaps July action was taken to allow for some outside of building use. The board allowed us to amend the building use application. User groups for outdoor, outdoor use are required to submit a mitigation plan. Participants or organizations are asked to sign waivers of liability for district used facilities. They're also asked to compensate for any extenuating expenses related to their use of facilities. Also at that time, it was agreed that district pools could be used for the adult swim and that type of thing, which has worked well in the time that that's been open. So with the cooler weather and the shift in sport interests, we're definitely seeing some interest or question rather as to whether or not interior building spaces would be available for non-district groups this fall. And that would require a board action to reverse the action that you took in the summer saying no.
So we would be, okay, so we'd be going against what we originally decided?
Yeah, so, so currently it's left that exterior building use could be used as described and then interior building use was not an option for outside groups. So that would take a board action to allow for that to occur once again, if that was what you wanted. My, I guess, while I'm already talking, my, my suggestion, if that's something you are interested in, is that we be abundantly clear with groups that the district has the ability to determine what the cleaning standards, the maintenance standards are and that the district needs to minimally be in a break-even place as far as custodial and supply expenses to make that happen. Sometimes there's a bit of negotiation about, well, we don't do this or we haven't used that. And I think for the sake of the safety of our, our students and staff as they're using facilities for district purposes, need to know that those standards are kept to the same sta, to the same height, so. Which perhaps seems like a no-brainer, but I think it's something for us to be very clear about.
Yeah.
Especially when you're paying hourly rates for custodians and things.
Yes.
Do we know like the costs are, because I know, I know we have a pretty high standard for cleaning.
Yeah, Mr. Carter, Director of Buildings and Grounds, is working on that. You know, what we would be looking at is probably space by space as to what type of people power it takes to do that as well as what, you know, the, obviously the cleaning routines are all very well-known, but it would depend on the, the type of facility used, the type of use, the duration of use, the numbers involved, those types of things. I think the other thing that one could consider or other districts, districts have considered is, you know, it's one thing for us to have, as an example, an elementary basketball league come and practice, but different than allowing people to hold a tournament. So I think you could make some distinctions there in the interim if you were interested in allowing the kid part, but not necessarily the packing the gym with, with crowds parts. So there may be some in-betweens if you're so inclined.
Well, would like to open this up, discussion board. What is the, what is the thoughts of the board here on this?
I guess I feel if we are moving forward with our school winter sports, I would almost feel better if our, if we had outside groups that want to use the facilities for the same thing are also following the same rules, the same.
Same message.
Guidance that they're following from, you know, whether it's basketball or wrestling, whatever it is.
They're not going to be wrestling.
They're following the guidance or the suggestion from the WIAA as to how those sports operate, that type of thing?
Yeah, I, I think the, it makes sense with, just given the fact that we're trying to keep our kids and get our kids back in school. I think inviting large groups that, you know, maybe we don't have anyone from the school district that's actually there and a representative. We're counting on that outside group to follow the same procedures that we have to follow. I think it would be a benefit if we ask and consider how that, you know, would play in. I mean, I don't necessarily need to make a decision on this tonight. I'd almost rather see what kind of things come forward. But I also, if, you know, you have somebody on the staff that's willing to review those plans and, you know, they, they think the guidance is being followed, I guess that's kind of where I'm, I'm feeling like it might be a good way to go.
I would be more that, like, I think you're specifically talking about youth teams, right? I'd be willing to bet everyone's just going to rabbit steal from what the WIAA has and apply it to their own youth organization.
That's what soccer and others have done this fall.
Yeah, right. So that, that makes sense. So, and then, and then, you know, hosting tournaments, that's, I think that's a whole separate other discussion. But my feeling is if we're gonna, you know, if the, if we're okay with the high school following the WIAA standards, I think. following the WIAA standards, I think that could be same for, in my opinion, the youth groups following those same standards. The chances of a youth group coming up with something better is probably not real likely to happen. And, and following, you know, kind of one set of guidelines, I think would be beneficial to, you know, one, one particular standard.
Would this then be also a case-by-case basis? I mean, we would probably put, put the crown on Rob to decide what's...
No, I would put the crown on the building principals.
I mean, my only, my only problem is, is that, you know, again, try, you know, it's a public, this is a public space, people pay, you know, taxes, but I think we should, we should use the, the goal that, is this going to help or hurt us get the kids back in school? Because, you know, it's one thing to have a middle school, you know, basketball that's our kids kind of doing the same thing that our high schoolers might be doing, but, you know, just as a bad example, we're not going to be hosting a regional volleyball tournament with 10,000 people, you know what I'm saying? Where, that's obviously not going to happen, but I think, I think it should be within reason and, and someone needs to decide whether it's safe and, you know, not, not going to turn us in the wrong direction as far as the community goes. That, that would be my only concern with this.
So then the ball would fall into our athletic directors' court?
Well, so, so for instance, with the WIAA, like, with contests that are possible but without crowds, so there's all of these special provisions. So, so if you look into that deeply, I think there are segments that, if, if I were doing a youth program, I would not reinvent the wheel when it's already there, and it's a somewhat understood standard among athletic organizations in the state. Mr. Mahoney, I think in what he put together for you regarding the, the winter activities recommendations, most of that would be applicable to those youth groups as well. I, I, if you're going to go in that direction, I think the updates that we did to the facilities' usage package already covered, I think the waivers are important, I think the mitigation plans are important, which is what you were just speaking of. I think, you know, um, I, not to, to belabor the point, but I, I do think though, you need to be clear that custodial and maintenance costs are provided by the using group. And I think organizationally, we've always been fairly accommodating with those types of things, and given the circumstances, especially when we're in person, our custodial crews are already taxed, um, just given the new routines. So, none of those are barriers, I just think there are things that should be considered. And just by way of process, so we're all clear, um, I think, um, Mr. Mahoney at the high school would definitely be the person to review those, those plans, um, but building use does work through the, the building level principles, so they would be the people sort of overseeing, um, the rest of those operations as they come.
So we'd be saying that, I guess in one, one respect, I would trust our custodial staff more?
It would have to be ours.
Yeah.
Absolutely have to be our. And I guess, and not to put a, a too fine a, a line on it, but I, I think we do sometimes have groups that, in the past, have been like, well, we'll just take care of it. And that's just not going to be the case right now for, for obvious reasons. So it's like anything else, some of those changes don't seem large to us, but are very much magnified to other groups.
So we would basically say, you guys want to use this space, here's the bill for cleaning, take it or leave it?
There you go.
Would that, part of that be able to be, like, bonused out to the custodial staff? Give them a little, you know, if they're already doing a lot of, you know, just to...
Well, it...
How's that?
It would, yeah, that gets pretty complicated with, yeah, I mean...
I don't want to like have all of our guys...
No, really, really, we can't...
Couldn't make money.
No, we can't do that, but I mean, it, it's either part of people's regular hours because there's capacity, or it would be overtime hours.
Okay.
Which is the way the policy is currently written anyway. It's just how it's implemented may be a little different. And I perhaps am overstating this, I just wanted to be clear that the standard is significantly different than it has been in the past, given the circumstances.
My guess is we haven't heard anything from that department as far as like, we are absolutely opposed to this idea.
Well, there are assigned responsibilities, so I, I think the bigger question is, given other job responsibilities on certain points in time, is there capacity or isn't there? And if there isn't capacity, then it becomes an, an idea of elective overtime and there's a process in place for that, but that would then be, um, communicated onto the customer, I suppose.
Thank you. So, uh, I'm hearing the majority of us are willing to entertain this motion for a vote to allow the indoor usage of our facilities?
And I think the other piece of that then is the other interior building use group that you've had in the past is BASE, which has not been operating in school facilities during this time of all virtual, so. Welcome to my world, there's always one more.
Yeah, so they would be lumped in there too. I mean, I, I, I'm, I've been pretty close in contact with the, um, people from BASE, so I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with, with them.
Can I take you back here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Does it make sense, from, Dr. Abbott, from what you're saying, is that, like, it's kind of like up to the building, you know, each, each school to kind of administer schedule and things like that? Does it make sense for, um, our athletic director, Steve Mahoney, to kind of approve all these plans and then kind of, you know, be in control of what's going on here? I, I don't know the logistics here, so it could be...
Yeah, so we'll work, we'll, we will work out the flow chart of that.
Yeah.
To be very honest with you, I hope in my administration there comes a time where we do building use from a central location and get it out of the individual buildings for a myriad of reasons. So that's my little soapbox, which I'd be happy to stand on for a long period of time. But at this point, it would be a mix of, I think, approval of plans from a central location with somebody with expertise, i.e. Steve Mahoney and his crew, but the, the facilities part of it would still emanate from the building location.
Okay.
So, it's manageable, if that's the way you want to go.
Okay.
But eventually that needs to be centralized.
Yeah.
For a variety of reasons. Just as a, a recollection of BASE, just so you know, when we were, um, split in person and virtual, you accepted a plan for them. They, um, were using a, a, a small portion of, of one of our elementary schools, they were paying for all of the things that we were talking about related to, um, custodial costs and everything else. They were also, um, implementing the, um, Fort Health Care, um, measures at that time with temperature checks, and they had a, um, a dedicated space for symptomatic, and their process and procedure, when we went through it at that time, was, um, very thorough, um, and I think operated smoothly in the time that we were open. When we went to, in virtual, once we went to virtual only, then all of those types of activities ceased as well, so that's the other piece of this.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott, for answering all of our questions and giving us the ever, uh, the, the, the purse of one more's. Always one more in the purse. So, um...
Prefer satchel.
Yeah, satchel, sorry, sorry. I was thinking of coin purse. Come on, everybody carries a coin purse. Let's go ahead and, uh, move on this, um, indoor facility usage, so we can go ahead and entertain the motion to, um, allow indoor usage of our facilities as per agreed upon with, with approved building, yeah.
Yeah, I think you could resume interior building use with district-approved, um, building use, um, forms, applications, um, waivers, mitigation plan that's approved and covering all extending waiting expenses related to the use.
Would that, so would this be something that we would have to, as a board, approve each one, or we allow the administration to take care of this?
And you do not want to.
No, we don't want to revolve, no, I don't want to either, I was just checking.
No, but I, I mean, it, so that I think would be the, parts of the motion that I saw Mrs. Hass frantically typing down there. And then, um, functionally though, we'll be clear, um, just as the WIAA is, that we're not looking at large groups, we're looking at trying to get kids some activities in facilities this fall, so.
So then what happens if somebody wanted to do a wrestling tournament or basketball tournament, allow no people in?
No.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah.
Which is, which is fine.
Even though theoretically, we're the worst in the county, so like, we're, we're the place you don't want to go visit, but...
No, and I think, and I think this is the interim, it, so I think what we just described, the WIAA already says no large groups and all of that, so that covers all of those nuances. And I would contend we're a very long way away from being able to do that, so I'm glad to hear you agree with that.
Let's entertain that motion.
All right, we will move to, um, allow outside groups to utilize our buildings, so long as they have a pre-approved plan, uh, with the school district, waivers, et cetera, et cetera, and are paying for maintenance costs to be determined, um, by our staff.
I have a motion by Mrs. Sneeden and a second by Mr. Paul. All those in favor say aye. Aye. And all those opposed? All right, so baby steps, guys, we're baby stepping our way back into the buildings. Moving forward, Wasby CISA reports legislative advocacy. Corey expressed some interest in going to, uh...
Can I back up for one second?
Yes, yes.
Sorry. Not to drag this me down a little longer here. With, with winter sports, one thing I'm not clear about, so if we, I don't know when winter sports start, presumably in a month, but if we are still virtual at that point, will winter sports start?
Yes.
For sure?
Yes, despite the learning format. And then it, it determines the...
Yeah, from, once we're there, okay, gotcha, understood.
Technically, if, if we're still virtual...
Winter sports have a better chance of going on because you don't, we're not going to have to worry about a school closing, right? So...
Or staff, or, yeah.
Okay, good.
Good, good clarification, Corey, thank you for, for speaking up about that. So, uh, yeah, Corey's got some things, he's thinking about going to, as far as Wasby seminars, those are, those are good, I encourage you, especially since you don't have to sit there for them. I'm up with the CISA stuff. The convention is a virtual convention this year, uh, so have at it. It should be, it should be actually pretty good. One of the irritating things about being in person is once you feel like you've gathered the information that's pertinent to you, you have to sometimes sit through those things, and now I think you can probably hit more than one at a time.
Sure.
Sometimes I was going from room to room as soon as I got the information I thought I needed, but now we can kind of plan it out. Moving, uh, on, we will look at, uh, a few items for future board meetings, beginning with behavioral...
Yeah, feels like a start right now, doesn't it? Behavioral mental health services report, uh, we'll look at a strategic plan update, we'll look at, um, school safety drills, uh, even the election timeline review, high school course proposals, if there are some, Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, COVID-19 regulatory flexibility framework, which is a mouthful. We'll also provide the board with a Google certification requirement update, which I think everyone recalls, um, certified staff are required to be minimally Google One certified by the end of April, um, and there's been a, a ton of opportunities and scaffolds and, um, and professional learning, um, available to staff to this point, and we thought it'd be good to give you an update prior to April as to where people are at with that required Google, uh, certification. And I'm sure there will be a school reopening portion of the meeting, regardless of where we're at at that moment.
All right, now it's, it's time for everybody's favorite, um, resolution.
I move that to a general.
I will second. A motion by, uh, Mr. Paul, second by Mr. Nicrom, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? And that's 9:54, folks. Thank you very much for coming, stay safe, be well, wear your masks, wash your hands, be nice to each other, keep it up.